I'm ready first, Ben. That I'm ready for. These cold, these cold nights I can't, I want to just sleep in and just wake up. Yeah, yeah. Hey, that's a pretty small, that looks like a ghetto. One more reason, two things both.
Can you hear coffee or tea now?
I do.
Good morning, Jennifer. I wonder how much of this Facebook thing is you, it's a lot of followers for the same.
Is there, yeah?
I mean, I think it is the one, because it's an older picture.
Yes. I don't see much to offer. I usually take how I take.
All right, this is long. Let me put my glasses on here.
No rush.
What's the new shop, I imagine it's only three six.
Yes.
It's only three six.
It's still looking like.
Wanted to make sure. Yeah, Jesse didn't have to evacuate last week.
No, no, it was something, didn't think I'd have to all this either. Since it was running out faster, I guess.
Did you charge your batteries?
Hmm?
Charge your batteries?
My best.
Yep. I got, I use our.
Every night.
I could use it by first hand in here.
Every night I charge it.
I don't, there's a true fool to buy heat seats, so this is my son.
I have heat seats. Number thirteen to fifteen, was meeting in order at six thirty, broke homes of joy.
Present.
Just go, I'm just.
Here.
Just a good one.
Here.
Derek, you don't have those updated ones, if anything tweaked?
I, I didn't, we also have a couple things we talked about.
Yeah, that's fine.
And, and I wanted to sort of press tonight.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, I'd actually like to see what I'm agreeing to before I agree to it, because changes.
Well, did you add, well, I guess the banking issue, one, did you add that, you added, you added fire stuff?
I did not add the fire stuff, but I wanted to hear it correctly. I think Julie and Scott really like to respond to it.
So they can respond to that, but all right.
All right, so what's the?
Not only has it changed since we met last, and whatever cultural changes you wanted made.
Tonight, all right.
I'll blow them if you want.
So what's the, um, extra fire stuff to kind of discuss?
That's four eleven. Um, well, the fire port, this has some equipment, it's due to be replaced. It's a practically a, between sixteen, seventeen thousand dollar item. And, uh, they were requesting the funding to do that.
Yes, I believe we did it for both, it'd be thirty two thousand. Sixteen, seventeen, now it's one, and then it won't be your supply.
One requested it.
Yeah.
And the other one needs it.
Eight dollars off with that deal, but it didn't even need it. And, and even that.
Sixteen years, it'll be thirty six.
Be short.
Thirty two, thirty six.
So, I mean, I, what's going to bump it up to one forty?
Which is additional thirty six.
Uh, it's actually expeditional thirty two.
Thirty two.
Going thirty two, sixteen, sixteen.
So, I mean, whatever you guys want, just.
Yeah, we can get the, figure out the cost to go.
Well, I only submitted my expected twenty twenty six, the high end. We had some stuff in progress, and I'm more, I'm obviously looking out for right here with the changes I've been preparing a little bit last month, and being part of, seeing the changes, they have some upfront expenses coming, that I think can be handled in twenty twenty six and then spread from there, so. I'm not saying split it fifty fifty, I would just like to.
No, no, I'm saying.
Have a number and work together.
I, I will say that they did use up some of the funding that they hadn't used for equipment they needed. Uh, so, but we still have a few dollars, however, I have been adamant about the fact that I'm going to buy something. I have a thousand, the invoice in my hand, it'll be paid on the fifteenth of November, it's one that's.
Harold, how much, how much is sitting there for the rest of?
It, it, it's only like six grand.
Okay, I gave you the, I gave you.
Yep, yep.
So, like I told you, um, I think some of that was for Geiger Townside, but we're deferring, because they have.
And I put the call out to, you know, if you.
I'm gonna follow up and tell them they have until tomorrow to get you anything out of that six that's left that they want to do right now.
Well, I mean.
We've been all in constant communication for the past three weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I reached out, and whenever he answers the phone, he now says, I know, the fifteen.
I'll push.
Sounds like everybody in agreement to add the thirty two. I thought, I don't think you had a choice.
Yeah.
Not only that, that's.
Okay. And I believe that is the only rest for any changes I already kind of said.
Whatever we did last time, then that we can do one. So, anybody else make their comments? No, I see, of course you have it on the regular meeting minutes or agenda for voting to approve it, I mean, are we going to wait till that, or we want to?
Well, it's up to you then, if you want to make a motion to advertise it with that correction.
And you're going to get us a copy of everything?
Uh, I will go.
Mr. President, a brief ask.
And send, send it out Monday.
Now.
And I, when we advertise it, I have to have it in the office for you.
Yeah. Now, everybody, I mean, I know we talked about last time, you know, the whole issue with the budget, not obviously the best budget ever, either increase revenue or increase costs, and of course, the way to increase revenue, obviously, at this point would be to raise taxes, we don't want to add it back to the any motions, or are we going to keep it exactly as written with the changes, thirty two thousand?
The other alternative, Mr. Chairman, is to, you know, be more wise with the budget. That's the alternative.
Well, but the thing is, with the budget that's in our hands and then we'll be out of tonight, are we going to change anything else before we make a motion to advertise? I'm going to go, I just wanted to do it now, then I'm going to make a motion to, um, confirm and advertise the budget as currently written for two thousand and twenty six. Like I said, it's just for an appetite, prove what we have for appetite.
I will second advertising.
Both homes of joy.
Yeah.
Mr. Go, Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bradley.
Although, no.
No worries.
This is going to change it.
And then I guess we would like to make a motion to adjourn at six thirty seven.
You can do it. Jesse has something, he wants to talk today about, we had a brief executive.
All right, well, then we'll go.
Because, I mean, we had this.
Yeah, we'll go to executive session at six thirty seven, then.
You do it yourself.
I went online, and, uh, like I, because I've been through this, so I actually work on it. Of course, I work with one teacher, I work with like twenty. She's like, why you stop?
Oh, good, good yourself.
Yes, we got down, we got down, we got down a couple, like a lot of, the end of June, a lot of July, and then you, a sport starts up in August, so, so, um, I would say like maybe the first week of August, and then that soccer starts, like, and it was at full speed till the sixth.
Okay.
So I had my sophomore and a senior and a sophomore in high school.
Okay.
I got, I got freshman.
I did, okay, yeah, what?
I saw a class.
Is he, okay, what school district?
Edriner.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're, so we're, we're Wilson School District, um, the. Uh, so I'm in Millard by County Church, so, yeah, so that's, so Wilson is a fairly, fairly sizable area, so, um. Yeah, they, they had a good season, so they lost, they lost one of the county championships, and they're, uh, if they didn't go, they didn't go, uh, foreign districts at all, um, it's a big, it's a long season, right, these.
Why is that good though?
So, you know, just long as far as, like, so they, so while they're in high school, they're not, they're not doing their club stuff, so, so my youngest play is out at, um, there's your son playing the club stuff.
Yeah.
First time.
Yeah, who's Rutter, he's, he's Rutter.
Oh, okay, so, so, uh, my youngest plays out at, uh, Elie Rush, what is it, um, Craig, Craig Group, so they, uh, you've never lived that much, you see that outside group out there, so they, um.
What league is that outside?
ECN, yeah.
Of this, that might be like, uh, like, uh, I've seen Delco.
Yeah, so that was, so Delco has an ex team, and then, so, like, you know, I don't know, Delco are all this stuff.
You know better.
Yeah, I only know because my kids, like, so, so you have like the two teams that like always fighting for what else is next, and then ECN, so. It's kind of, it's kind of cool, because, uh, so, last year, his team ended up, I think they five, they finished sixth in the country, and.
So, yeah.
Or, like, the whole, like, the, like, so they play Texas, they play Council, like, like Sacramento, and they did, so they're, they're like number three right now in the country, so it's, but the, the team right above, uh, the age above them, no, it's, it was like second, but winning the country, you tell. So, I think the only one that's top, one of the most, so, I feel you, yeah, so, yeah, so they're, but they're that, that routine is, so they're, they're, they're like, they're a whole team, I think they have, of the, and they have twenty six kids, by the way, on that team, so they only take, they only take eighteen and eighteen every tournament, but of the twenty six, I think they have like nine already, four can run, so. Do you know, how old, uh, oh, wait, so that would be, they're eighteens.
Oh, so serious.
Yeah. So, yeah, they're seventeen, eighteen, and then mine's, my youngest is fifteen, going to turn sixteen in like a week, so.
That's wild.
So the drivers.
Oh, that's right, you're, you're in that.
Well, my oldest is, he'll, he's seventeen, he'll be eighteen in, uh, in March, so I've been dealing with him in the driver.
How's he doing?
He does great, man, but I can't go to sleep until he's in the, in, in the bed, you know.
Is that one?
And then, so, that's my driver. Well, no, so, yeah, do you remember, like, I, how old am I? Okay, so I'm forty three, so, when, um, like, the Cinderella license, and they, so we could get our license at, like, fifteen and eight, like, you know, and then you would get your permit until I had sixteen, and go get your license, but, so now, they can't get their license, so where are their permits until they're sixteen, which is frustrating, because now, you have an extra six months, like, a little bit of sleep, right, so, uh, but they're not, until you turn eighteen, they're, they need to be home by, unless it's work or something else. Which is also awesome, because otherwise, I mean, what's all the beho, so. Oh, it's a bit distracting, but I had, I had my, uh, I had my, uh, my oldest, first up, I mean, I had him on the highway the second day, and I figured out what's up right after. And I said.
And, and Brian, bro.
Yeah, so I put him on the highway like the second day, and he did great, because I, like I said to him, other than that, you know, they on and off, I feel like it's easier than, even in back roads, because macro, you're just like, your head's on the swivel all the time, and, but no, he's over that.
I do, I do remember, I remember like the first time I got in four sevens.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's right, of course, I would say.
I remember the first time I got in my, you know, I was like, what?
That's funny, well, that's great, because that was my highway as the blue, so.
Yeah.
And you're around, so I grew up in Springfield.
I grew up in Schaaf.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Those were first back then, they were just country roads.
Right. Yeah, it's not like that anymore, I don't know. It's, it's. Patch, you have. The way, when Burke's is doing, the same thing, like, towards like the, which one is different.
Nice.
Yeah, there's so much, so much going on, you know, you know, one lane each direction, so it's, it's tough, it's tough. You know what I mean, Brian, all this development.
You got a break from the one missing, and go up and down Rain Boulevard.
Oh, no.
I had it divided.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You don't have to worry about anybody going on the red, just practice going up and around, go further. Navigate the circle.
That's all right.
Give me luck one.
Oh, man. Yeah, we were looking at a shopping center in Jersey, and, uh, all I was complaining about, like, the in and out was horrible, right, I called a broker, um, I forget who that is, and I'm like, oh, we have no interest because the access sucks, and I, he goes, what do you mean, I'm like, I gotta get on the jug handle to go into the shopping center, he goes, Brian. Brian, that's all of Jersey, oh, okay, this access is hard. You're like, yeah, I just want to go.
Yeah, like, yeah.
I think I gotta take that, go right to go left.
Yeah, I, I wonder what the statistics are, right, because if they were trying to revert access, it actually worked.
I, I don't know, it's, except for, you know, if you're from PA in the left lane, you're trying to make the left turn, you got it to get over to right very quickly, so. It's funny, we were talking Brigantene, so we're down in Brigantene, and uh, they have a traffic circle, yeah, but it's the only circle that if you're through, it's in the middle, you don't have a right away. So like, it's, and no one knows how to write, so, so you got all these people in the middle, and I was, I was like in the middle, I'm like, oh, what is going on?
I mean, there's.
There are, so you have, so you have Brigantene there, then you have, right behind the gas station. And so, one, two. Ocean, three, four, five, I think you have five.
Yeah, it's.
So maybe that's where it is, right, is that, because it's all, uh, the way they're located. Yeah, there are, there are. Yep, yeah. It's uh, there's a lot of construction out there now, so.
Hi, hi.
There you go, the cops right here.
And. Hello. Well, I guess I better sign.
Not much, how about you? Same repays every day, right?
Every single day.
Different, same problems, different projects, right?
Yep, yep, and that's the truth. So, what do you have? Actually, it's gotta be six, so, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, that's right, I forgot that one, she was going to the man. Yeah, all the time. Yeah, all the time.
Do not, for, not for certain, neither of them.
Yeah, it's gonna, yeah, it's definitely gonna work this year down there, so. It just kept, and it's, it's like.
People stranger, how you been?
Good, how are you?
Good. Chugging along.
Chugging along.
Yeah.
Something in South Harbor.
No, we're all quiet there.
Yeah.
I reckon struck, well, Wolf and Park isn't quite struck, I guess, but. They should be short.
Are you doing the project cross things that we have to take for that?
No, we're not doing that one.
No, it's a simple.
Yeah, no, no. Oh, right. Cross the bridge, yes, yeah.
Yeah, lower highway, yeah, I heard, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that one's.
It was sun now.
What's that?
It was sun now.
Oh, wow, that's exciting.
It's a quarter night.
That's cool, yes.
Did they see you?
New perspective on things. Still a different perspective.
Yeah, well, that's.
Top of the world. Cold season.
I'll double check tomorrow morning when I go in. I just printed off what was happening.
How's Charlie doing?
Oh, yeah.
Surprised you took about the story?
Yes. I, I, I was, I was.
Is that how I feel? I'm a little better at that.
Before we get back, I got it, I knocked it out very early, yeah.
What's that? No, I was just grabbing.
Are you going to citizens' case?
That's why I like, oh, he's. I think, I don't know.
I don't think so, ready yet, I'm not, I. Did, did you, I, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying, I, I mean, we talk, but I don't see each other for a while, so. How's that, how's Fox doing by the way? I think with the, with the new one, yeah.
He's good.
I said, her brother lives across the street from me.
So, um, it's fun.
Yeah.
He's like. He think, like. You're not shy, I'm like. But, but it's fun, it's like, and he's just like, you know, ten, eleven, and he's six, seven in the morning. I'm like, yeah, man, and I'm like. You go on the couch, it's, it's a big. I was like, I ran two hours.
I didn't.
I really didn't, I'm like.
I see him in the morning again, but he, like, bushy morning.
And then he took that home.
Yeah, he does. Running, jumping. That's his hybrid too, uh-oh.
That's serious. We definitely. Whenever you. That's got it.
I always, I always like that. On the highway walking around, and, you know, so.
He's, he's, um. It's funny, he's like. My wife's like, I can't hold my knee, or what, he's like, but I know, I know how to do this, and I'm like, I need you to go, and he's like, that's it, and I'm like, why? I just, but, but, yeah, but he's not proud to have, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
She's like, yeah, no more twins.
Oh.
So I have a nice.
What is there, so you're having it, though, you know?
Yeah, I, I thought that.
Oh, you guys are tracking.
Yeah, yeah, right, right, that's so funny, um, they're.
Along with her. No. So, um, but it's funny, cause like, I like, like, she's, she's a, she's like. Yeah, she's just like, here, she's like, she's not crazy fun, just like, she's so, doesn't even sign a letter, I mean, I don't see.
Are you sure?
I think you just tell it in person, I mean, he'll write it, but it's, she's, she's good with it, too, but it's fun.
If you get that, yeah, smile on his face, there, there we go. Not gonna.
Well, it was, yeah, it's like, yes, that's.
Right.
Think the baby's gonna walk out that?
I'll make a motion here.
At six fifty nine.
Yep, I'll do that. Yes.
I believe I heard from one guy, uh, Rich, he was gonna be.
I talked to Bruce last night, he asked, he said they will be here Tuesday, going forward.
I had her on behalf first, for thanks, uh, just cause. Um, we, she's.
Yeah, yes.
On November thirteen, four, two, five, one shot, the order of seven coffers, the public leaders, the local staff, all the local.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call Mr. Joy then.
Here. Here.
All right, any citizens concerned? No, you have, all right, name and address, please.
Richard Steon, uh, West Fourth, West First Street, first row, I forgot. I wonder if they've replaced the, uh, the three officers that left the township. They've replaced them yet?
Well, chief, you wanna talk about what's going on?
We're currently going through the process, the hiring process right now.
So, how many officers are, you have on duty right now, like, three, include yourself, maybe?
No, we have, we have more than that. Yeah, yeah, we're at the six right now.
Okay, and they're gonna replace three more yet?
It's gonna be up to the board, what they choose to decide. We're short two officers from our full complement.
Yeah, um, well, you see. I'm concerned about the, the police officers, because, um. As, as large as this, uh, township is, we don't have enough police officers out there. And you see Plymouth meeting yesterday, um, a police officer was run down, run over three times, two officers were in the hospital in Banshee. Because of, probably an unruly, I believe it was unruly, uh, we don't know if it was drugs yet or not, but, and then he had a police officer hat on. Um, I'm concerned about the police officer, because I had a friend, David Hancock, with the Montgomery Township Police Department, who was murdered on the job with his own revolver. Okay, then I had another, another friend that is headed detectives in Chester County, David Sasso, who was shot. Like, he was on duty through the back of his police vehicle with a thirty thirty rifle. Okay, so, as big as this township is, and as dark as it is, out on these township roads, we need these police officers. Okay, and we just don't need one riding by himself, we need two sometimes, it's dangerous out there. You all know it, and I wouldn't wanna be a cop today, I wouldn't want a beautiful officer. They have to look behind their back everywhere they're at, parking lot down the street here. I would hope that they would be replaced as quickly as possible.
Whatever your process has happened, and next week, there's gonna be one or two more, and hopefully by the end of the year, at least hire one more.
That's the plan.
Okay, but there still isn't enough, correct?
You always use more police, or then you can always use more nurses, more doctors, more.
Right, right, um, real quick, I'll make a real quick, I was wondering, um. Are you the chief yet, or no?
Um, yeah, I've been chief.
I mean, are you removing in as the chief now?
No, I was not.
How long's that, it's over a year, right?
It has been over a year, yes.
I just wonder what the process was, I mean, I don't know why it's taking so long, but I do hope, I mean, I was, I was president of two unions for ten years apiece. And if you do become chief, please put it in your contract that if you're not chief anymore, and they decide can you. Please make sure that you're gonna be back into the union for your own protection.
Is that you, any other citizens concerned? This correspondence, none, sorry, chief.
Good evening, boy, uh, first thing I have on the agenda is, uh, see if we request a motion for an application fee for a grant resolution. This would be to, uh, purchase a new Ford F-150 police interceptor. And the grant is pretty much all filled out, ready to go, we're just waiting for the resolution, we got.
What's the number, what's the number?
Seventy two thousand four hundred thirty four dollars.
He's asking for the resolution.
Resolution, twenty, twenty five, twenty four.
Oh, your amount wasn't a bad thing either.
What was the?
Seventy two thousand four hundred thirty four and fifty seven cents.
I'd like to make a motion to, for a resolution twenty five, twenty four.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, that's like it.
I'll say.
Yeah, we'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley.
Yes.
I'll do this.
Thank you, boy.
We also need a motion to approve a hundred dollars for the application. Anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion that be.
The application fee.
Application fee of a hundred dollars.
Yeah, a second.
I'll second that.
We'll call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley.
Yes.
I'll do this.
Thank you, boy.
Next thing I have on the agenda, um, we have the policies updated, um, I don't know if you guys wanna cause all staff to review them before I take them out, I haven't put them out yet. But everything's up to date, and our policy.
You have to copy that, right?
Yeah, we have digital copy.
What's the normal procedure, do I have to, the law firm look at it beforehand?
It, it depends, uh, I know that.
Well, you can make changes.
Insurance company re- really requires us to have a preview.
All right, well, then, get us copies and have those guys review.
And, I think this covered everything.
Do we need a motion to that, or just?
It wouldn't hurt, it wouldn't hurt to au- to authorize cost of staff review of the updated, these procedural policies.
You don't like to make that motion?
Don't make that motion.
We have a second. We'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Goel.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bentley. I'll do this.
Thank you, boy.
The next thing I have on my agenda is to review and discuss the ATS camera repair quote. Um, so, the camera that faces the back of the building, the one that we probably watch the most. Is not working, has not been working properly for probably since I've been hired here. The new camera, ATS has put the new camera up, um, they had come to me and tell me that there's an issue with the wire that went underground. That's why it's not working properly, it has since went out and hasn't come back on. Uh, so I met, uh, Rich Fix out here one day, and asked him to go over everything with me, and he gave me a quote. And the quote to have the camera fixed will be one thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars.
What are they gonna do, put like a wireless up?
So, there's two options, one, they're gonna either try to pull the cat five wire, which is located right here, underneath, uh, the driveway, all the way up to the camera. If that doesn't work, if they can't get through it, um, for whatever reason, it might have collapsed or something, and they're gonna do a, I believe it's a Wi-Fi direct shot from here to there. Um, it just depends what option we're doing.
Point to point, yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's a little paperwork here, says they propose to replace the cable for six hundred and ninety seven dollars, and then it costs, he said, a thousand four ninety seven. But now, if you do a thousand wireless work, and one thousand four ninety seven, they're not gonna do the cable.
Right, right.
So, really.
Sure, the max, sure, fourteen ninety seven.
Yeah.
That works, yeah. It's not working.
I don't wanna make a motion to approve the quote here, whether it's the six hundred ninety seven, hopefully to pull the cable, or at worst, one thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars in no sense to get that camera fixed.
So you want me to have to try and pull the cable first, right?
If it failed, are we gonna look for?
I would imagine.
Or they just wanna do straight the wireless?
I can clarify that for Tuesday if you want.
I was gonna say, double.
Clarify that for Tuesday.
Yeah, make sure.
Should be able to pull the cable and figure out if it's stuck or not, stuck pretty quick.
Yeah, I don't think so, but now, the other question is, the point to point. We make sure that's gonna be covered as far as making rules or whatever.
Yeah, wait till Tuesday.
You better. Yes.
Yes, I have, thank you.
All right, what else?
That's it, thank you.
All right, Harold.
But the finances are in the packet, uh, we do not have a school agent report yet, uh, because they haven't collected much money yet. Uh, they are, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but the letters and the bills will arrive on Friday. Uh, we have agreed that, uh, a bill will be thrown the tenth day, uh, at the beginning of the quarter. So we're in the, they need to get their checks in for the last quarter, before we send out the bills, and they're gonna be late in the first. Which is very much what we did when we had it up.
And then manager's comments.
Okay, interviews, uh, we've completed the interviews. Um, I guess at some point, uh, you guys need to sit down and, uh, talk about what that looks like, uh, is anybody else you'd like to see again? Uh, or, you know, whatever you guys want me to do there. The complaint from the citizen at the, uh, last meeting, uh, I did not send the letter out because the. because the leadership changed, uh, before I could do that. And, uh, he is going to come in and give us an update, uh, at our next meeting, I believe.
Now, is that gonna, well, is that officially gonna be on the agenda somewhere else?
Well, the fire companies are one of the...
Fire companies are one of them.
Okay, um, I already did the media lens, Pam's update. Uh, I'll call Rich. Uh, with some, some letters, we should have a deck on there by the end of next week. The plant will pour concrete on Friday.
And how much closer does that put us?
What's that?
When do you think they're gonna have it completed? Cause that's a question that you posed.
I don't want to have anybody driving over before it's ready, but I'll stick with my, we'll have champagne on there on New Year's Eve.
Well, that was basically where I'm coming from. Well, if you're desperate, I don't have to go sit at the bridge of New Year's Eve and buy it.
The Al Yay Creek, they're gonna do it now on November the twenty-first at, uh, nine o'clock. Uh, so they'll be hauling that stuff out there. Uh, the Overa Road, uh, the homing that we were working on, um, somebody, a pen dot, he emailed me this morning and said he's hoping to have something back early next week. Uh, we also have been working on a project where the, uh, school courses, uh, out at, uh, High Point. So he wants to get the homing thing done first, cause it's most imperative, and, and then he'll work on the other one. Green Hill Estates Pump and Hall. Uh, they have a couple of outstanding invoices, part of that's our fault, so it's theirs. Uh, but we've also gotten calls from the people that were doing the pumping hauling while the chaos was going on out there, was who was doing what. And they have not been paid since August. In addition, I don't have his latest bond. He says he'll give more money back, uh, on Monday night, I guess it is. Uh, so I don't have his bond yet, that he was supposed to give me the last time I reduced his bond.
And I, don't interrupt you, Harold, I have items to discuss on that when we get to matter.
Okay, that is fine, I, you have a lot of, uh, with, the RTMA is gonna sign a resolution, hopefully a passive resolution, on Monday night, uh, permitting us to bill him for, uh, the sewage that we did receive. Okay. Now, we've had, uh, some people interested in, um, more or less like a pantry. Uh, we're coming into the season where, uh, some people are a little distressed. And, uh, we thought maybe it might be a good idea to, uh, solicit, maybe gather items to put together for cable and even do something very similar to, like they do the book donations, where just build a little thing and they can get out what they want from it.
Maybe I want down at Earthville, a police station.
Okay. So, uh, you know, it's a thought, if you guys wanna pursue it, start putting something together, if not, I'll take it.
Kinda be nice.
Well, I, you know, it's...
It kinda be nice.
Um, first thing. So, um, Joe Keasey actually called me about this, because we've had six, um, interruptions this year, uh, with our internet. Uh, so, we're all in here the other day, and I'm here for four hours, and I got nothing done, cause I had no internet access. The other thing it also does is puts these guys in the order with, uh, their systems. So, uh, Joe Keasey called me and he said, the first net is out there, we actually thought we were gonna use first net for our, uh, cell phones. And, um, it would be forty bucks per place per month. So it would be forty for here, and I'd say that it should be no more than forty dollars. Uh, forty dollars for here and a month for, and forty up there, so it's eighty bucks a month, uh, for uninterrupted internet access.
But that's gonna be as a backup, if the prior...
Yeah, that, that's, that's correct. So we'd still use some selected, and it goes down, we, we transfer over. And I'm not exactly sure how that transfer over is automatic, or will we have to do something?
What line of, line item makes it?
What's that?
What line item?
It'll be under the internet.
Is there enough to cover both?
Um...
Yeah, that's under a thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, eight hundred bucks. It'll be under eighty hundred bucks.
I don't know what's on, what the cost of that line item.
I'll find the line item, if you want, for Tuesday. Make this up a new. Who'll take it out of the supervisor discretionary fund?
Sure.
The whole fifty dollars.
Yeah.
All right, uh, now we have a grant application for our high-reach road safety education control equipment, better known as a boomover. And, uh, that resolution, uh, will be twenty twenty-five, and it is for the amount of two hundred fifteen thousand, a hundred ninety-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
And that is a grant instead, right?
That is a grant.
So we have to make, I think, we have to make a motion for the, the grant and the resolution, and then an additional grant for the hundred dollars.
Well, not a grant, it's...
Well, additional hundred dollar fee for the grant.
Just make one motion for both.
Yeah.
That's basically what I did, I said...
A motion to file a grant application for the...
Yep.
You did that?
Yeah, I requested it all in one shot.
I second that.
It means we're set along.
Resolution twenty-five twenty-five for both the application fee and the grant for the high-reach roadway safety education control equipment. We have a first and second roll call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
I'll go with this.
And hopefully, uh, we find some good folks. The twenty twenty-six vendor fees and fee schedule. Um, this might be a question for Colin. Uh, we have ordinances that have very low numbers in for fees. Can we change that by virtue of the fee schedule?
It, well, I guess, it depends if the language in the ordinance gives the board the right to make an update by resolution.
Yeah, cause r- right now, we're paying ten dollars for a, a burglar alarm permit.
For what, for what?
For a burglar alarm permit. And it's cost us, wouldn't that process it? And, you know, uh, we, we talked earlier, uh, this year about the, uh, accident reports. Now, that there happens to be mandated by the state, what we can charge, but we're, we're, you're charging twenty-five dollars. And, you know, man has gotta process it, she's gotta decide, she's been out there, we gotta put it in quick books. So it's a lot of things that we're getting, not be that good.
The short answer is that the ordinance needs to be amended if it does not already give the township the power to update the fee by resolution.
All right, I, I do know that one, for the ordinance, allows us to make updates. And same as the, um, boomware.
Can't you, can't you...
I mean, I guess...
Can't you modify the resolution to base the fee off of the township fee schedule, so then you can just update?
Well, in, in, well, in theory, I guess, the township could pass an ordinance that says, you know, all fees set forth in any ordinance...
Are on the fee schedule.
Yeah. Are, are now...
I think that would probably be the easiest thing to do, and capture, capture everything that you've missed.
Cause you don't, you don't have to do every ordinance, every single topic.
I think, and, and like I said, the one, I, I, I would like everybody to be able to, where to get a burglar alarm, you know, but, you know, ten dollars, we're not, we're not covered off of, off of the paperwork.
Hold on, so this, do we then wanna make a motion to somebody in Collins' office to make an ordinance for that? That's what the consensus is.
Yeah, 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 we, we, we're to authorize by preparation of the ordinance.
Might do a motion for that? Wanna call it? What do you wanna call it?
Motion to authorize cause of staff's preparation of an ordinance that puts all, 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 all fees pursuant to resolution.
How many motion will he send?
And I'll second that, because we're not gonna try and do it either.
All right, can I call Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
I'll go with this.
If, there, just to note, there are, there would be a few exceptions, like for instance, that ordinance would not apply to the Sado. Or the Zon...
I'm sure that would be in your ordinance, didn't it?
That has, and that, and that has, that has a separate process. It's just flammers.
Well, theoretically, it's gonna be TBT, cause it's just gonna be to be determined later, because you're gonna put that out there, but then we'll put our RIS out.
So, we wanna change, if we're gonna, you know, make sure we know what we're changing, uh, and refer back to the ordinance and...
Right.
All right, I think we've covered the budget now, so we don't have to, uh, vote to advertise, okay? Um, we already did them. Uh, reorganization meeting. Uh, the EAC's gonna meet in February, the planning, we should plan a meeting as the date of time prescribed. And we would also, uh, like a motion to advertise the meeting schedule, which everybody's asked. You need to magnify that stuff?
Yeah. And now it's changed to Thursdays, right?
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday, Thursday, right? So no more Tuesday.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Can I call Mr. Joy? Yes. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
I'll go with this.
Okay, so, in our SME ordinance fifteen oh three, we require the people not only to have their subject tank pumped and inspected, provide us a check, but we also require them to give us the receipt saying they paid it. Oftentimes, we're not getting receipts, and it's holding up the paperwork. So, I don't know, you guys wanna make a motion to suspend that part of your business, or we got the receipts, or you want us to spend the time to get the receipts?
I'm gonna make a motion that we suspend that with the receipt, because you're gonna get people, people will already bounce in, they got a puppet, then they gotta send you the receipt, it's like, why?
What's the percentage of not receiving receipts?
DEPs require...
Not receiving receipts, I would say, what you mean, twenty percent?
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't DEP require compliance that we need to show proof of?
So, yeah, so the pumper hauler is signing a statement saying he's pumped it.
But are we getting it?
We, we do get that along with the thirty-five dollar check. So, to me, it was like, okay, I don't trust a guy got to make up the paperwork and... You look perplexed here, Colin.
Isn't, isn't a report generated when the pumper hauler pumps the holds?
He, he generates a report. He, he fills out a form, and he, and mails it in. And he's signing it along with his permit.
So you're already getting documentation, it's done, it's just you don't have the receipt from the property.
So we're chasing receipts.
That's why, unless you have...
My thing is, is how many people call the pumper, hey, put it on my card, and you don't do get a receipt?
Well, if you already have documentation that's completed, then why you need to...
That's why I was so...
I know, but that's why I wanted to know.
I don't think we need a receipt.
If you have a signed document from the pump, all of it was done.
Yeah, that's good enough.
Okay, so Joy made a motion.
And she made a motion to, uh...
Suspend that receipt and requirement.
Yes.
And so, good, I was saying...
Awesome. Is it, well, is that in the ordinance?
That, that they have, yes.
You can't do that? Can you put that in your ordinance?
I mean, may, 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 maybe the, the use of the word receipt in that ordinance means the form that we already get. Is, is receipt defined in that ordinance?
Well, if you're, it's gonna be here Tuesday.
All right, well, then let's...
Anyway, I'll email it.
Let's clarify that, so we have...
Just, yeah, email it all, so we can, all right, I would throw my vote, email it to me so we can giggle at it and figure out what we want to do.
See what the true definition of receipt is.
I like that, uh, received, that's...
All right.
Okay, now we're back to the improvement of the joint citizen for, for your time, joint authority. We are, I've worked it out with Union as far as the, uh, term list, certain terms for each person, and, uh, we are working on a joint resolution that we will both be doing on reorganization.
So you need us to...
I need you to make a motion to appoint Nelson as the joint person.
Now, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yes, twenty-six.
Now, anyone like to make a motion for that, or resolution twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, to appoint Nelson Jr. as the joint citizen appointment, for God's sake.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Can I call Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that's all I have, uh, except, uh, there's been a lot of articles and stuff in the last couple of weeks regarding, um, funding for ambulance services. And, uh, while I know we've gone through the budget, uh, is there any thoughts to anything concerning that?
Is that, as in thoughts to be...
As in thoughts of, you know, financial assistance, or, you know, with, whenever anybody has a mind, I'm not, uh, you know, saying that we have to do anything, I'm just looking for thoughts. I mean, I think firstly that the, first, the, the organizing supplies service here is pretty financially sound, even though they just had some cutbacks.
Yeah. That's what happens.
They're for profit, I will... I will say on that note...
For profit, oh.
On that note, our providers chief has reached out to me recently, would like to have lunch with whoever wants to be there, and the manager, to discuss funding.
That's the people of town.
Tower, tower, yeah.
To order it.
Oh, tower.
Tower.
Like I said, so I, I kind of, it was an elephant that's been floating around out there, and...
I forgot to answer that.
Okay. So, uh, you know, i- if you guys want to give some thought to it, uh, you know...
I'm thinking about it Tuesday, actually.
Okay. Um, that's all I believe I have.
All right, then we got supervisors' reports, anybody having updates, your thoughts on any, ready for, what you got? You have a rule, anybody?
I'm just gonna throw back a newsletter. It, it, it's gonna take two months to get together, and the people who wanna do it are gonna wanna do it for spring. So that's just, uh, thrown over to you for future reference, because a lot of people would come in, they would like to get something in the name of this, to tell them what's going on, cause they don't have internet, so my answer is, you might wanna think about doing that, starting in the beginning of the year, because it takes a while to get advertisers.
The only thing I'm just saying, I'm bringing up solar again quick, um, I know we talked about budget meeting last time, you know, trying to get more, um, money into the Robinson over time. At some point, I still think it should be looked into, I know that everybody got the email, it's a while ago, I'm looking at it now, for that one company, that how much money you can get per year over time. Um, I know we're trying to figure out where additional revenues gonna come in, um, and that still would be, I personally think, the option.
Well, it is, and I don't, even with mine, like, you can watch my meeting roll backwards, which is a really nice thing to see. So, my solar, I'm not gonna complain about.
So, and I think over, and I don't have it over here, I thought I was trying to find me this email, but it's not. But I forget how much it costs, how much the township potentially could get in thirty years. I know it's over thirty years, but that's still, um, something, or into nothing.
We didn't...
Okay, we did thirty years, maybe?
I don't think it's rude, it's not about, it's about the future, remember?
Thirty years, just some of the summer, yeah. Anyway, that's my thing on that, and then data centers on here, but I know we're gonna talk about data centers later, um, so... All right, so we have fire companies, you know, that stuff's sort of in the packet, minutes and reports, you do that for Tuesday, you're a packet. Um, now we got Ryan.
Okay, good evening, Board. Um, first item under my section is Cedar Hill Estates. Uh, I think we have some folks here to discuss that with you. Um, before you guys start, I'll just remind you that the plan is currently extended to the end of this year, twelve thirty-one, so, um, it won't be long, I'll be emailing Brian, plus my extension, if we go through, so... So, we're here. That's all I have, is...
The floor is yours, just plug it.
I'll make a second, okay. Well, thank you, uh, thanks for putting us on the agenda. Uh, I think the last time we were here, which honestly, I don't remember how long ago it was at this point...
we were here, which honestly, I don't remember how long ago it was at this point, we mentioned we were gonna do a conditional load study, or we were in order a conditional load study from First Energy, so we did do that, we did file our application, so we wanted to provide an update on that, and then also talk about, or at least open up the dialogue regarding, uh, the types of zoning, and what recommendations there could be, or what, you know, what that would look like, so, with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to Jake Turcanyan, who is handling pretty much everything, so. And by the way, I'm Brian Cole with Modus, Modus Development, sorry.
Sure, Jake Turcanyan with CBR re-adviser to ownership, um, so we did engage First Energy with the commission on load study, um, it took a little longer than we had liked, um, but the utilities are a pretty busy rate, as you can imagine, um, but they were really good to work with us, um, it's a high voltage tap, um, takes a long, long time and a lot of money to do it, um, and they have a sequential study process to, to study the interconnection, um, you know, we got past the first step, which is arguably the hardest one, which is validating the service, validating the interconnection, um, which we've done, uh, it's been papered, and, um, you know, there's certainly upgrades that need to be made to the system, and, and any case where you tap the high voltage infrastructure, and the outages need to be coordinated, um, and, you know, it, it passed a litmus test, and they, they have confirmed that they're able to service, um, so we're here before you, you know, trying to take the next step.
Can I answer any questions that you may have?
So, you, so just for the electric part, so, you know, I know obviously now data centers are everywhere and in the unions, and you're saying they say you're, you know, there's good, you know, they're saying you're, they're gonna be able to supply you, but the big, one of the things is, is how much it's gonna cost everybody else?
Yeah, so the utilities are getting, legislatively, the utilities are getting pretty good, uh, at dealing with that, because the burden should not be on the ratepayers, right? Um, and historically, the, the first wave of dot-com data centers, a lot of that infrastructure ended up on the rate base, the consumers, and ended up in their bills, energy costs are going up, and they're going up regardless, um, but what the utilities are trying to do is, and they're implementing this, including First Energy, they're saying, um, if it wasn't but for this connection, we wouldn't have had to do this infrastructure, it's a but-for case, and the but-for ends up on the developer, or the end user, and that combination of it, um, and it comes in the form of security, um, so when we take the next step with the utility, there'll have to be security posted, that securitizes the interconnection, and securitizes the connection costs over, over a period of time, so it doesn't end up on the ratepayers, and that's part of the process with the utilities that we navigate.
So, how much do we guarantee it's not gonna be in the ratepayers, because you see it everywhere else, it is on the ratepayers.
Yeah, that's, that's what they're trying to.
I mean, it's all nice for you to say it's not gonna be, but that doesn't mean in five years, six years, seven years, ten years?
Yeah, I think we need to pay attention to what, what, what happens in December, so PJM goes to FERC in December, and they're, they're gonna make a bunch of recommendations, and part of it, part of it's that, is how we protect the rate base and the ratepayers, so there's gonna be legislation that comes out of those recommendations that will be voted on next session, probably in summer of twenty-six, but that's one of their main issues, is to keep the infrastructure costs tied to specific data center projects away from the rate base.
Yeah, because with the budget season, you know, we're worried about increasing costs of township, which we can control stuff, we can't control that right off, you know, and that's gonna be a problem, potential problem.
It doesn't concern you that somebody's telling you to provide you with electric that doesn't generate a kilowatt?
Say again?
I said, it doesn't bother you that somebody's promising you electric that does not generate a kilowatt?
They don't, yeah, so the utilities don't generate it.
Well, First Energy has to generate it.
They have none, none of the utilities still.
Yeah, they do.
Well, in, in PJM, it, it, when, when they separated generation from transmission, um, all the generations controlled by the IPPs, the independent power producers, and the, the transmission owners are just conveyance, so First Energy is just a conveyor of electric, um, the generation is all controlled by independent power producers, and that changed in like, um, I think it was around two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen is when they kind of separated that out, um, but there, there's a window, I mean, if, if, there's a window of time where Pennsylvania's interesting, a little, little digression, but Pennsylvania exports more power than any other state in the country outside of the state bounds, and a lot of that power goes down to Northern Virginia, um, you know, the administration and the Commonwealth wanna try to retain a lot of the resources that Pennsylvania has and keep it in state, as opposed to shipping it somewhere else and letting all that revenue go outside the state bounds, part of that is creating data centers in Pennsylvania where the energy stays here, um, and therefore the ratables stay here, and the gross stays here, so it, bigger picture, if it's done correctly and responsibly, it'll benefit everybody, um, navigate, it's not navigating, it's not gonna be easy, but we're in the middle of it, and this is a really good case study of, if we do it right, it could be a beneficial, uh, development for everybody.
So since you said that, what would be the benefits?
I mean, the, the tax implications are.
Does the community know what are the tax implications would be, and how many, I think it's typically four, like, two hundred or something?
I mean, it, it'll depend on how our zoning shakes out, and what we can view on the property, um, but it'll be several hundred jobs, the, the job creation's a big piece to it, um, the ratables is even more, I mean, the, the, the actual, the property tax and the school tax implications are gonna be very, very significant, um, that's the biggest benefit, and then also the, the direct and indirect jobs too, I mean, there's gonna be thousands of jobs over many years just to build this, um, so all those, all the, all of that, you know, from, uh, all the subcontractors, the HVC suppliers, electrician.
Well, that always happens, but when Burgeville did their thing, now, they were like, five employees now, so that was the argument then, that look at all the contractors, that built that plant, they didn't go away.
That, that was also the way he heard, or chose to do it.
That, that still, that, that stuff isn't forever, that's.
Yeah, there's a swell, right, there'll, there'll be a swell during construction, uh, the construction on something like this is gonna be many years, but there'll be a swell, and then there'll be a retreat for the direct jobs, uh, there'll be indirect jobs that result as, I mean, you know, there's gonna be hundreds of jobs, uh, internal to the perimeter of the site, and then there'll be indirect jobs created as a result of the development, um, but the real impacts is, the real fiscal impact is, is the taxes, and I would volunteer from the head of ownership, if we get to the next step, we're happy to come to you with a fiscal impact analysis, so give you kind of bookends on, you know, if we're here, this is what you can expect, and if we're here, this is what you can expect, we'll give you a rant out, and, and at least give you an idea of what those impacts would be.
No, it'd be beneficial, because the community's gonna wanna know that, so.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Supposed to be here and help protect and move forward, and sometimes moving forward is always a difficult thing.
Yeah.
You guys aren't allowed to use solar there?
Um, it's not that we're not allowed to use solar, I mean, the, the, solar is good in some instances, um, solar's challenging others, uh, the sun doesn't always shine, so for, for data centers, uh, solar's not really the best solution for data centers.
I wasn't thinking about a whole solution, I was thinking about would it feed, I was just curious.
Well, she's probably thinking that if you do some, automatically some solar, it would potentially decrease the overall cost to everybody else.
Yeah, so.
It was just interior, it wasn't.
Plus, if you're as successful as you think you're gonna be, then you can always get the, the solar batteries that, that, you know, whatever they cost, that you can store stuff overnight, it gives you like forty-eight, seventy-two hours per hour.
Yeah.
Which then also helps the ratepayers not have to pay as much.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's a lot of solar in queue, for sure, um, it's, it's, it's tough, I mean, solar's a little tough, because you, you need a lot of land.
Solar's real tough.
Yeah. You need a lot of land to really make it, like, feasible, I mean, you, you need acres and acres and acres of product.
How many acres of that?
What's that?
How many acres of that?
So like, if we had, to, to give you an example, if we had, if we had to put enough solar panels, panel, to power this data center, it would probably be somewhere between six and seven thousand acres or so.
Well, I'm not saying you do solar to power the whole thing.
Yeah, we were just thinking about our case, we, you know.
We could, we, 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 we could be creative, well, I mean, I think there's, uh, there's opportunities to, to, to.
It, it was just a, it was just a question, because.
We're here to answer questions.
I don't, I don't know that, so.
Yeah.
Because if you look, and well, you probably don't know if you did, but if you look at the agenda later here, on the agenda later, um, or EAC, I've been looking into a data center ordinance, because they use stuff from South Bydlerburg, and I think, and Future, they've done stuff, um, so there's things in there, which is not what you're here for tonight, you're here for electric, and, you know, you wanna talk about some zoning stuff, um, but, but that's, I mean, I guess that's being proactive, thinking about things, just besides this electric stuff.
Yeah, zoning, and Brian and I were talking about this on the way here, uh, there's a number of townships in Eastern Pennsylvania that, that have adopted tax amendments to, to kind of establish bumpers for development, because they, they know it's common, and they're being, trying to be proactive, um, there's a number of other townships that are, are in reactive position, where applications were made, and the townships kind of weren't ready for it, um, and then there's other townships that are adopting overlays, where maybe they have mixed use, mixed zoning, and made sense to do an overlay in an area that made sense, as opposed to redrawing the entire map, um, so we, we were talking about that on the way here, and there's different ways we can do it, um, I think our, I would argue that our approach is, let us come to you and talk to you about it, have an open dialogue about it, as opposed to just trying to jam something through, um, and that's what we're trying to be here, here talking about.
With your perspective, because we're all, because we're here, we, okay, so, yeah, that's a good, that's a good strategy.
Well, and it's still, these are complicated projects, and they're new, they're new to everybody, I mean, they're, especially in the state, they're, it's a new thing, and nobody wants to make a mistake, they don't wanna make decisions that are.
Everybody's gonna make mistakes.
Again, you gotta look fifty, sixty, seventy years ahead, so.
Right.
When we're dead.
Yeah, those are, are, in our right way.
You know, but still, I mean, that's, now I see in your little email, your, your thing here, you're, you wanted to potentially do a overlay.
That's what we were discussing, yeah, we, we wanted to really open it up for dialogue, um, but as, as Jake mentioned, you know, the overlay, for certain reasons, and, you know, Ryan, if, you know.
What's, what's the base zoning there?
So, so it's, and Brian, I don't know if you wanna jump in that.
It's, it's high density residential.
High density.
It's really tough.
It's residential, anyway.
It's residential.
I don't know four, one, R, two, or three of them.
Yeah, there's, there's two, there's a, there's an R one designation on the back, the back seventy-nine acres, and then there's an R three zoning on the front, uh, two hundred ninety acres, so it's, it's a three hundred sixty-one acre tract, five tracts, but three hundred sixty-one hundred acres.
So how does this overlay thing work here, for you?
So that's what we, we, we're not sure yet, so that, so that's one of those, because it, there's a couple things, so, you know, and, and if I, Ryan, if I may speak here as far as the, the way the overlay could be set up, or how they're set up, is that it could base it off of certain attributes, whether it's size of ground, whether it's a frontage along a certain road, whether it's frontage along, you know, the rail, the gut lines, because one of the things I think a lot of townships try not to do is, if you end up doing a rezoning, or a, I guess a text amendment, but a rezoning, it allows other folks to come in for sites that may not be at the best location, or suitable location, to request the exact same thing, so by doing an overlay, it allows you to use certain attributes that not every property can, can, can utilize, if that, if that makes any sense.
So we don't have to set a precedent, you're not gonna, we are, open ourselves wide.
Right, exactly right, you just designate this area for that application.
And there's a significant piece of this property that has transmission lines running right, right through it as well, so, so those are some of those, I'm not sure if you can use that as an attribute, but there's certain things that, not every property, given size, frontage, and those.
And you've also got the train tracks right by.
That's exactly right, so there, there's a, there's a lot of variables to this site than not any other site in the municipality.
No offense, if you'd rather your data center next to me than hearing the train.
How long do you, do you expect this thing to take you to build, from, turning the first shell to, to the laser?
I, my, my bet, so I, I would say if we ran our process out from now, um, you're probably three years to put the first building up, and then you're probably three to five to build it from there, so you're, you're probably a five to eight year.
I suppose eight years.
Five to eight years now, right, and it, it also depends on the, on the, where our developer and, or end user will be, because some groups may wanna phase into it over time, some groups may wanna just do the whole thing at once, but realistically, you're, you're three years after the first one, and then, you know, three to five year old.
Dead. Cause they said there's all, there's all variables, quit talking like that, we just had Chris Bellas about dying, darn it, what are you doing today? I know it's the thirteenth, darn it.
I have a question.
Sure.
I, I kinda miss this, is this going in on Grande's property?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm in the middle of it, so you're next to it. Okay, so they're gonna have to buy me out. Have a way across that property.
You can discuss that, I mean, that's not, that's not for a minute's discussion today.
Have a way across that property.
I have the only one in there. Parking lot company.
Now, Ryan, do you have any, like, whatever?
Look, look, Rick, I see, now it's on.
Yeah, well, that's, did that last, yes, that's the property, but, you know, that stuff is separate from.
Did they buy it, all right?
No, this, this, this is the same people, it's just they're changing it from the houses to potentially this.
Oh, this is Grande's people?
I see, just thinking.
Okay.
About five hundred houses next to you.
I have a buyer for that property, he wants to buy the three hundred acres.
Okay.
All right, all right, all right, now, anything else with the electric and the zoning?
I don't think at this point, I, I think, you know, the discussion is, I think it was Colin and Joe, you know, procedurally.
At the same time, hold on here.
If the board wants to move forward, I think we need to discuss procedurally what that looks like, right, um, again, there's the overlay option, there's text amendment options, there's rezoning options, we haven't even considered the aspects associated with that, so.
I think we need more details about the plan itself to really.
Well, that's why they can't.
To consider, to, to consider the possible zoning amendment, either in the form of rezoning or overlay.
Does it make sense to have a, I guess, staff meeting to kind of go over that more specifics, with, with staff that's gonna help determine that, and then provide you whatever data, and then come back?
Well, I always like when it's in public meetings, those are separate staff meetings.
Okay, okay, it's not, not anything, I, we're just trying to.
No, it's just, just.
No, I, I think, yeah, and, and I understand that, um, I, I think at this point, we, we now know that power's viable, right, it's.
Claim that power is viable.
We haven't seen that, that's a, that's a claim from someone that's in the business of those claims.
Well, I have a report, right? You haven't, you haven't submitted, I did not have.
Okay, send this over, send this over the report, but, you know, you gotta understand, this is a rural township, I was on this board twenty years ago when we did this zoning, there were reasons why we did this, and this is a significant, significant issue that should be carefully considered, you know, once you build something out, and I don't believe solar's an, an option, a, a good option as relates to this, might be in other areas, but not this.
Yeah, because it was more, there's more to discuss than with these same sort of things, like, and it's not, because you could just expand it all these things, but, like, where's the water coming from, and everything else, and obviously you have the line through there and stuff.
Those are all variables, they have to show us as we move along, that's the whole point of how the process.
That's sort of what I was gonna say, we, we, we gave you our word the last time we were here, that we said we're gonna figure out if the power's kind of available, and so we wanted to keep our word, come back, and there's, there's still a lot of questions that still need to be answered from our side, and, and obviously from your side as well, so.
Well, step by step, that's all you can do, you are confined by certain restrictions that you have to do this, this, and this, and if you're coming back to us each time, and we know what's going on, it's like, I'm sorry, I like our rural area, but I'd rather have that, that five hundred houses there, okay, you could be positive, a positive impact on the school taxes, which are killing people around here, the fact that we don't have a whole lot of industry, and we're not exeter, so I'm not likely to say, hey, well, we won't ask you for taxes for five or ten years, because they don't need to hear that as a community, they need to hear you're here, and you're willing to invest in us, if you will.
Of course, yeah, the community benefits are, are real, and we're happy to articulate them for you.
Well, see, and that's, it, it's really important that they understand what's, how it's gonna end to end, and how you protect our environment, or whatever, you know, everybody else wants to do.
Sure.
So anything else related to the two things right here for the electric or, or the potential stuff?
So, just real quick, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, so you're gonna forward the, the report over, we'll, we'll take a look at it, um, and then if the board wants to have you guys back again, I mean, we're gonna need a time extension as well, um, you know, we can have these options kind of prepared for some discussion, if, if that's what you wanna do, but the board has to direct us how, how you wanna proceed.
I think that a, a good way to do it, Ryan.
They have an act of plan as well. Yeah. For the resident.
Oh, yeah, so, that's your suggestion, I think we should go with what Ryan's suggesting.
Well, is there anything we could have for December, or is it gonna be into next year?
Sure, we can, I mean, submit the power study, and we'll take a look at it, you Sure, we can. I mean, submit the power study, and we'll take a look at it, you know. And we can certainly, between, you know, Colin's office and my office, discuss ways to move forward, should you wish to do so, or, you know, at least a review of the, the power study and that information.
Yeah. Sorry, there is like, not, do you wanna explain, like, if we, if this doesn't move forward, like a timeline of like the next steps for us and the investment for that, that's why we're also here for that, so to brief chat.
Yeah, uh, this process takes a long time, but I'm here to chip away at it. Uh, so we, we finished the first step. We wanted to have this discussion and get it, get a warm feel that we're, it makes sense to continue to move forward. Because the next steps are, are, they're, they're significant, the next steps. The next steps are, are more time, more money. So the, there's a, there's a detailed load study that happens next, and that process, process will probably take nine, twelve months to do the study and cost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
That is a cost, though, that you would, not in a row.
Yeah.
But I, I feel like you're seeming to make me feel guilty, because you gotta spend money after a twenty or thirty-year delay. You understand where I'm coming from?
No, we're just indicating the process of what, if it's, if, if this is going to be something that we're, we'll move forward, we're just saying this is the next step that we'll have to do.
Well, I don't think, and I'm not speaking for the rest of you, or I don't think anybody's unfavorable at it necessarily, but, you know, an overlay here becomes an overlay here, and an overlay here, and an overlay here. You could.
We don't can do it right, do it in a way that it doesn't.
That's why all those options are still available on the table for everything.
No, I, I, I don't think, again, I'm not speaking for the, the, the board, but, I mean, I've got, and I've seen, I mean, tell, tell me about any disasters that you've seen with respect to data centers.
Disasters?
Disasters. Show me, tell me about a data center, say, in the last few years that really didn't go right.
I'm not aware of any, to be honest with you. And, and again, there's, 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 um, there's two under construction in the region. It's not like there's data centers popping up everywhere. These things are like very, very difficult to, to, to execute. There's one complex going vertical in Burway. And then there's another complex going vertical in Southern New Jersey. You've probably read about a lot, a lot of projects on the news. A lot of those projects have not materialized. They've just, they're going through the public process, but there's two projects under construction. There's one in the state. One in Southern New Jersey, and then there's one in Pennsylvania. There's others, there's other pieces of land that have transacted, but nothing else is going vertical yet.
Vertical meaning on, going one line, going.
Just even vertical, construction-wise, just going vertically, and like the, you know, the walls have fallen off. So it's very, very early in the process. We, we do expect there's gonna be substantial investment and development in Pennsylvania. I mean, I think that's very visible. But I don't think the, the amount of development is gonna be as much as everyone expects based on what they read and see in the news.
Got a question. Name and address, please.
Anne Marie McMahon, forty-two seventy-two Morgantown Road in Mountain in Plowville. A member of the TAC, and that is later in the agenda here. We have been working on ordinances for data centers to try to get some environmental protections in place before data centers actually do come into the township, is to make sure that we are not compromising health of our township residents, water quality, electric, et cetera. But just to your previous point and to your question, Supervisor Bittler, we have been looking at case studies from all across the country, and we are aware of many negative repercussions in, in communities. We didn't bring any of that data with us tonight, because that's not what we were here for tonight, but we do have it. Which is not to say that this is a, a non-starter here. It's just to be aware that there are plenty of these in the country, lots of case studies from communities around the country. So, these are things we all have to be aware of.
Thank you.
Tom Kine, eight seventy-three White Bear Road, Berthyr, PA. I'm a old telephone guy, really bad. Have almost forty years in Conestoga before CEI, before DME, and before Windstream. I can remember the days before P E plans, where we got calls from GPU to see if they could go on our emergency generators to keep a brownout from going into a blackout. We talked about the electric load quite a bit tonight. What happens if there's no electric? What's your backup? Is it, from what I understand and read, that data centers are basically always on full. And the load is from day one to day N, okay? So what happens when we have an interruption of that power? What's your power backup? What's the environmental impact and noise quality of that backup? It, it's just a, a lot of things. I've also been on groups where we prioritize restoration of a merge, of an outage. So what, are you gonna be the top tier of survivability on a restricted generation basis? Are you gonna be the first return to service, or is the residential coming first? I mean, when we had.
Let him answer, maybe.
Okay, well, one thing about this area had a major incident happen. I guess it's about thirteen years ago, where we had a wet, heavy snow at, around, uh, Halloween. And we had roads closed for weeks. We had people out of electric for weeks. And then we had follow-up meetings at Twin Valley High School, where GPU brought their people in, and they said they were gonna do all this trimming to make sure it never happened again.
Yeah.
But the results of that meeting, and I was township manager at that time.
Yeah.
The results of that meeting were hierarchies were set up of prioritizing the return to service of outages in an area.
Yeah, and that's all, that's all distribution.
Right, and I know.
Yeah.
But I'm just trying to figure out, at what priority will you be over residential outage?
Well, all right, so candidly, um, this is a high voltage connection, right? So it's, it's two thirty, so this is like an I ninety-five of electric.
Believe me.
Everything on the distribution side, which is the houses, schools, commercial property, they're all on distribution. The distribution will go out first in the event of a storm.
Oh, I know.
And it always does. The transmission usually doesn't. The transmission, historical transmission outages are once every ten years.
That, that being said, are they gonna have an alternate feed into you from different directions? If we have a tornado go through and knock down a tower? We've had that happen in this area, up in Topten, Deck of Battery, up that way, where high-voltage transmission power lines were caught, driven late, that it grabbed.
Yeah, it happens, it happens. Yeah, for sure.
We need, we need, we need diverse one second.
That's okay.
When, when Bethlehem Steel had their plant in operation out in Morgantown, they had to have two alternate feeds into that plant.
Right.
For security.
Yeah.
Because of people involved.
Redundancy, yeah, for sure.
But also, the, the way I feel that these data centers are gonna be on a tier above mining, that they're gonna be the top tier to return to service, and also, are they gonna be surviving where the residential isn't?
You know, it, unfortunately, but that, that is the reality of it. The, the distribution system will go out, and the transmission system usually doesn't. That's just, that's just how the grid works.
Right, but are you planning in your design for a full emergency backup system in case that goes down?
What, it really is user-dependent. There, there's, it's really interesting you're asking about this, because there's some operators out there, household name operators, that say, we want diesel backup and the whole entire thing. Like diesel backup. If we have five hundred megawatts connection to, to the grid, we want five hundred megawatts of diesel sitting there. And then there's other groups that are saying, you know what? Let's save all that money on all the diesel generators and put additional layers of redundancy on the transmission side, right? And then eliminate the generators. So, I mean, there, there are scenarios where we're seeing some level of redundancy in the transmission, and then some level of redundancy in generation.
That's why I brought the, the mines in Morgantown on the forefront, because not only had to have they commit from different directions, they had to have them coming in from different substations or different generations.
That's partisan, yeah, absolutely.
Because to me, if these things are as important as they're gonna be, it, it just, to me, it bothered my mind that, that you're gonna have to have full redundancy on bifurcated access on your transmission lines.
That's right.
And if both of them go down, I mean, right now, we're getting storms in this area that were tornado alley, ten or fifteen years ago. Topten, they leveled around the Topten area when I was still the vice president, even when everybody was still there.
We can, we can, this, this is big a question. Well, that's all right, but this will be questions where we get into more of the details and stuff. So, all right, so we got, we got some answers that we're gonna have some redundancy, because they've got it, right? And residential won't be important, but that's.
I can get long-winded on that.
No, you're on point.
Anything else for them? Anybody else have anything?
So Ryan, we should submit a, a station. Submit, submit a session, get us a copy of the power study, and, and we'll go from there unless the board wants to provide us any additional direction.
On agenda next month.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, you can continue onward.
Okay, um, next item I have, Harold had touched on this earlier. Green Hills Estates. As the board well knows, we have residents living out there now. And we've been working with them and Ryan Holmes and the developer to continue to make this project.
Excuse me.
No, I.
Thanks. Hold it door shut. Notice, Chris, that. Yep, that's what you're missing, hold.
So I'm gonna pass some pictures down. Over the course of the last two months, we've received some concerns, complaints, et cetera, from both the homeowners and other outside agency partners primarily PENDOT. So there's a number of houses around the outside of this development to the rear that have rain gardens that have not been functioning properly from day one. We have been working with one property owner individually, in particular, but I did meet with at least three or four today. Ryan Holmes is coming back. They've committed, they, they excavated one of these, and they've committed to come back, I believe it's Monday of next week, to try to rebuild one. So this is gonna be an ongoing process, and I'm saying this to make the board aware. You might hear complaints regarding these old mass systems. It did take some time, but Ryan Holmes is working to address this problem. It's going to be a long-term solution and a short-term solution. We all know, board does not like to infiltrate into our red play. So that's one item I wanted to bring your attention in case the board catches wind of, of these concerns. There is somebody looking at it. Additionally, both Harold and myself received a phone call from PENDOT regarding some of the permitting associated with their work and lack of payment of invoices in particular going back at least two years. I had a lengthy phone conversation with a gentleman by the name of Ray Retzke. Ray's kind of standing in right now for the permit manager. That position was recently backfilled, and, and he's kind of transitioning back out of that, but Ray expressed some concern with a number of things. First and foremost, PENDOT's not being paid for their inspection, inspection time on the site. They have a number of back invoices, like I stated. Second of all, there is some scope of work that with respect to million impaving that they had requested be done, and it's not being performed. And second of all, or third of all, the developer apparently has come back to them and said, well, I'm going to engage in legal action with you, because you're holding up my, my permitting and, and construction, and they're saying, we're not, we're not coming back out because you're not paying us, right? So PENDOT wanted to make us aware of that situation, number one. And my takeaway from that conversation is, I believe that myself on behalf of the township and a sewer authority engineer on behalf of the sewer authority, and PENDOT need to kind of tighten together here and make sure that we're all on the same page. There is a SRO release, which is again in my report, it's been in my report for a while, that was requested back in, I think, July. Yeah, and we've been kind of sitting on that, because there's a number of items that were requested that haven't been installed. One of the items, I called my eye right away, was the street signs. They've since been installed, but it came at a lengthy, uh, process. So at this point, I'm advising the board to continue to sit on that SRO release. I'm gonna discuss it with Colin and Joan, as well as the sewer authority engineer to bring him up to speed with my conversation with PENDOT. So again, we're all, we're all always on the same team, but to make sure that we, we're all clear from, from the same book here and we're aware of what's going on. So, again, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm not asking for any action items unless the board has some direction you'd like to give, but really just an update item that I felt was worth noting, and maybe Harold has something to add.
I, I do. If you guys remember, over the summer, we did have some issues where their workout here caused some driveway washouts. We had several problems after the storm.
Across the street.
Yeah. In, in addition, their failure to comply with PENDOT is gonna cost the, the sewer authority the ability to obtain a permit. Because they will not issue a permit until that, their job is closed out. So the sewer authority's gonna be stuck dead in the water in the event they get a grant to complete, to start that project up there. So it, it is imperative that, you know, these guys comply and move, move on so that the sewer authority can get their permits.
So we have a number of players and interests here, and again, I think we wanna make sure that we're coordinating the township's interest to the best of our abilities.
Is PENDOT aware of that issue?
I did tell them that, yes.
They're aware of that, yeah. Keep, keep in mind, both the township and the authority are co-permittees on somebody's permits.
That is right.
Or if that's, and then you're right with them.
Yeah, so.
Because ultimately, we want PENDOT to use the financial security to do that work, so we can get a permit.
Yeah, if you reach that point.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they made him post, but the way he described it, some substantial work that needs to be done there.
Yeah, they, they, based on my conversation, are, are in the process to kind of circle in the wagons on their behalf. They wanted to make us aware of that, and they want to coordinate with both the township and the authority to do rich.
And I will say, after the, the initial call from PENDOT, I did get a call from Joe, and he left a message from the phone. I've called him three times, and I left him two messages, and I've not received anything back. So.
When I pulled on the site this morning, there was six residents that came out of their houses with any number of concerns, and, and we had a tailgate meeting out there. I tried to let them know that we were aware of these issues. There are certainly, this is nothing to do with the PENDOT issues. These are more HOA and stormwater-related issues. So I wanted to make, so, you know, the board's aware, we are aware of this, and we're working on it. We will keep you up to speed on this stuff. Okay? Next item I have, as Harold mentioned, Rockefeller Road Bridge is well underway. They did submit a payment application, payment application number one. That is in the amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ten cents. That was included in my report, was reviewed by Engineer Whitman, and he recommends that the board authorize payment application number one in that.
Do you agree with that?
I do.
Anyone like to make a motion for the payment application number one, amount of one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and ten cents?
I'll make that motion.
We have a second. Ross, the, the, we'll call Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Not a yes. Thank you.
Final item I have is with respect to our 2026 street work. As we discussed, we're working full speed ahead to get this out early. Harold and I have been coordinating with both Union and Breckknock. Breckknock, Union provided their streets about a week ago. Breckknock provided theirs today. So we have a list of roads. This is particularly for the oil chip contract for all three municipalities. So we have a list of roads, this is particularly for the oil chip contract, um, for all three municipalities. Uh, I have in my report, um, a suggested bidding schedule, um, with the first advertisement November twenty, second ad November twenty-fifth, and having bids to be opened, uh, December tenth. It's a little bit tricky because we're dancing around the, uh, Thanksgiving holiday there, um, but I think that's doable based upon the fact that the other municipalities submitted their streets.
Nelson called, he has some changes.
Yeah, and we're, we, we can accommodate that even with this schedule. So, uh, if the board's willing, I'd, I'd be seeking authorization to, to bid, uh, based upon those, uh, dates. Subject to change in case, uh, we get a curveball from one of the other municipalities, or if, uh, Colin sees an issue with any of those dates, I think he's okay. Right, I would like to make some, like, motion for those bidding dates, November twentieth, second on the time, November twenty-fifth, open bids, December twentieth, unless there's curveball.
Yeah, sixteen makes sense.
And, uh, then Ward, Vince, he didn't say that, he just.
Yeah, I'm sorry, open the tenth, award on the sixteenth.
He didn't go that far. All right, well then, anyone like to make a motion for the first advertisement, second advertisement, open bids and award the bids, December sixteenth?
Yes. I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
I'll send a motion.
Ross, Colm, Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Galloway.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Thank you, that's all I have unless you have questions in the report or others.
Could any other question about, uh, bidding with and without line painting?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, conversation came up that they, line painters are doing an awful job in, uh, and that they would like to kind of go together again and purchase a motorized vehicle type, uh, line painter. And that's if, you know, give me some quotes and some prices, and tell me how we're gonna save money and I'll figure it out.
I will say that, um, if you look at any of our roads that have been, uh, resurfaced in the last two years, line painting is, uh, the most, um, subject of, suspect of, of all the work that's done because you have this nice new road and the W yellow line kind of dances down the center. So with that, the inside, Harold, do you want me to include line painting for, we would typically include it in our bids. Brecknock did not want it in, Union did, so I, you know, true.
Uh, I'll, I'll find it out, because we're nowhere near being able to buy, uh, you know, the equipment, and maybe not gonna be able to figure it out for next year.
Yeah, okay. So I'll coordinate that with each municipality. Oh, legal matters.
Yeah, so, so I had a chance to review some case along with the establishment clause, which is clause in the First Amendment of the Constitution that prevents government entanglement with religion. And the, the, uh, bridge version is that we can make this donation.
We can or can't?
We can, because it's not sponsoring religion. I would just recommend that the donation be given with correspondence, that it's to support similar tree planting activities in the future.
And so then up there, it was gonna be four hundred dollars, it was gonna be a dollar a tree. And you gave all four hundred out. So.
It's for their bucks. And I'll have to pull the paperwork, because it was about the trees or.
Yeah, the trees, yeah, it was, it's kind of about that. All right, then, anyone like to make a motion to, to the, to the donation for, for the trees and the amount of four hundred dollars that we discussed last week, or if I can get verification to go?
Yes, thank you. We'll make that motion.
All right, do we have a second? All right, I'll send it, Ross, Colm, Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Galloway.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bitler.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Well, I'm sure, since you're there, the preview of it, where the potential of this donation was not gonna happen because they're a religious organization and then was brought up separation of. So, if you're fine, we're fine.
Thank you.
All right, I guess Harold, I guess anything here with the public works?
Okay, the public works for them. So, we have moved to like fuel, not everybody using them, we're also using Ascentins. It's great because we don't have to fight for tax money back, because they're, all, all the fuel is tax-free, that's what I'm going with. Wex and Ascentins pretty much run in the same price range, uh, within a couple of cents to each other, the wex, we do get money back. So, uh, we're looking to, look to the future of terminating these pumps out back, which are near the end of their life cycle. Okay? Rockefeller Bridge, we ready? We're well past the beans being sold.
Is that, is that, is that a different bridge?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just spelled differently in this, this.
All right, and then the, the school I talked about there earlier, we need to end up, um, Marvin from PENDOT to get back to us, and, uh, hopefully we should place these signings out, type foods.
Yes. It's gonna be a parking rack, nothing there, yeah, same at the meeting minutes, and of course, as we discussed earlier, TAC did work on it, I don't think, it wasn't, oh, it wasn't happening, I guess, right?
It'll be on the chase, on the workshop, I thought regular package.
Stuff for people to look at and review. Like you said, they reviewed stuff from half site, that South Idolberg, and Future and some other stuff, and just kind of came up with, uh, potentially some preliminary thoughts. The next, actually, I think, was stuff based off of what Ron gives, too.
What's that?
Uh, data center.
Yeah.
But that was, but, sorry, so I'll be at that one. And then there was, you know, the old bridges, Paul was gonna get connection to the. Oh, I just saw that.
I did, I'm sorry.
You, you give her access to Facebook?
Well, I'm going to, because I wanna make sure I was picking the right column. There's an older picture for when she was younger, so I just.
Okay. Okay.
Last one.
So, she'll get access, I can do that, I can do that in a quarter of eight if she wants. And then key identification, anything going with that, Harold?
I, well, now, one thing I, I overlooked while we went through the budget stuff, is, uh, millage rate. So are we looking to change the millage or aren't we? And, uh, regardless whether we are or aren't, I need to, uh, do the paperwork, so we can sign up and approve it on Tuesday. You're asking if, if this board's gonna make a tax increase, essentially?
I have millage.
Uh, yeah, not my age, but millage.
I think it's a millage, something like that.
No, millage, no, millage. So we require every year to turn in, uh, where our millage rate is. This is the day we need to do that.
It sounded like a six thirty quarters.
Does that, does that really have to be submitted by Tuesday?
No.
Yeah, we told me, we have to do it in the.
It's like a future January.
Until December thirty-third.
No, that's part of our thirty-day thing, which is.
We, we can certainly make it that.
I think we're probably gonna make it that. Because obviously from the six thirty to.
It does make a difference whether you're gonna balance the budget.
I know, but that was in six thirty, six thirty to six thirty-seven, no one was.
So if you're, if you're going to not increase the millage to budget, it's good. If you're gonna increase the millage, the budget needs to be adjusted.
As I said before, I'm not personally interested in that.
Well, I said, we're, uh, you know, in, in verse income, you know, we're losing money every year, and, uh, you know, if we're that could be exact, if we need to find some way to make that money out. And, you know, probably the way to do it, find more income, or cut what you're doing.
Or do what you're, or do what you're doing more efficiently.
Well, you could do that too, but you're gonna, something's gonna give.
And more efficiently, that's always.
Anything else, Harold, for the whole business for tonight?
Yeah, I got one for you. Peace down.
Is it on?
Nope. And I asked Colin.
No, but i- if we're not taking action, it could be discussed.
All right. Nobody took into consideration that we have been paying the E codes, or we did pay them, to the best of my knowledge, at least two to three payments. So, like, you wanna make sure you finish that, because we are paying for it.
Yeah.
You don't start it and then stop.
Okay, it's unfortunate that we made one payment. And, uh, we should have gone through these ordinances.
No, 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 that's what they do.
No, it is not what they do.
And this is why it was not a good idea, it wasn't timely, and this is an example of the ways that I'm talking.
Wait a minute, hold on a sec, please.
Let me just give you an example, a small, small example. We, we went through, Jason and I went through the ordinance on the alarms, and we also went through when the traffic control. There were things in those, uh, ordinances are not legal for us to even do. So they're gonna codify these things, and they're gonna put all that stuff back in. Are they coming out?
No, no, that's not, that's, that's not necessarily true. Part, part of the service you get is of a review against the current laws and, you know, modern procedure. And then you, you basically get a, a report that can be a hundred pages long about, or concerning all of the recommendations that E code, you know, believes are, are appropriate. And that takes time for the township, in concert with the solicitor, to review, because you have to go through each and every recommendation that's, that's being made, and frankly, part of that process could be an up, an update to every ordinance.
Right.
A stat set, setting forth that fees are gonna be done by fee schedule.
So, so let me just say, my experience in law companies has not led me there.
Well, your experience and what he's telling us and what I understood are different, so I'm gonna trust his judgment, because he's dealt with it more than we have.
Well, neither of you have seen what they're sending me.
Well, that's because you're not sharing, it's funny, Rich had to share everything, but you don't. I guess you're early morning meeting.
He shares everything that he needs to share.
Wait a minute.
No, 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 Mr. Chairman, this, this is, this is what is wrong with the township, right here, you're seeing. We are not ready to send the order, and we're not ready to incur that expense, and then we do.
No.
We're not gonna have you two yell at each other.
It benefits the community, because it clarifies things, they can't even look through our ordinances and know what's there.
If, if I, if I may, Harold, what's the, the process already had?
They're trying to drag it down.
We got the first batch to review yet.
Sorry.
First batch to review yet.
First batch to review.
But no one's ever seen it. And, I'm sorry, I might only be here another month and a half, but I want all your emails, just like Rich had to do, because Mr. Bitler threw it at me. So now I want them too, whether you like it or not, all of them.
And anything else?
I think that would require the entire board to just.
Well, it wasn't required when Bitler wanted them, so I'm aware.
Uh, what makes you think he's getting them?
Well, what, what makes you think we all should get them, and that's not the problem here, that's not just the problem.
Whatever, can we go find something else?
All right, anything else, Harold?
I, I don't have anything.
If we're, if we're paying for it, I just request that.
We need another executive session.
Can we see those?
I think we do. This is what we do.
I think we do.
Yeah, you do.
All right. And then we'll go executive session eight twenty-four.
I just don't, I think that's enough, we should discuss. I agree, I agree.
You stick around. All right, so we can talk later.
Yeah.
I mean, but I wanted to let him know that I knew who were them. He thought I did. When I got the hallway, it could be, I think, I just wanted to make sure what roles you're under. Is it the PUC, the state, the Fed, uh, on his survivability versus us? Do you need this?
No, that's for you, it is your name on it, I'm just the male.
Okay, all right, we see you here. How are we doing, your chief?
I'm good, how are you?
All right.
So what, we're supposed to come back? Did you get a couple of us mail?
I did, yes, thank you. We didn't, nothing has come in for planning today.
Nothing's supposed to be. And we can do a big onslaught. I know, we're not, we don't, we're not ready to say that, but it's like, okay, what?
It's, it's, it's been crazy in a lot of other places, and I'm thankful, but it's kind of screwed down.
They don't respond to you like that, because there's been a couple of bad voices came up. And I wasn't sure if you were aware.
No, I, I have not seen anything.
And I told him, I checked again, and then he don't.
Harold might talk about that, I think that I should stop at the office one morning, we should look at those. Because he has.
But that's what I say, we shouldn't.
Well, but again, the township hired him, he's not a sub to me. The township hired him as, as a special consultant, which they can do as part of their professional services. But my guess is that early on, nobody was monitoring those same voices, so I have this need and suspicion. We're gonna find that he's close to his, yep, so I need to get the proposal, which I'm sure you guys have somewhere, but I know, but I have to pull copies of those out, and I'll stop then, and we'll go.
Like those two words, like, I know, it wasn't intense, but, um, I just, I just saw it yesterday, it's messy. I don't know if you should be aware of that, or that maybe at least you should be aware of us. I thought you should be in the circle, you know, just like, on the.
Somebody should be keeping track of where we're at, you know? And we can, and maybe, I, I hope I'm wrong, you know what I mean, maybe, maybe everything's fine.
She's doing really good, the reason she's, she's working her way through yours, just like.
Oh, yeah? They're not easy, if you fall behind, they're easy. And all of mine are very project-specific, so.
So, but I think that's not the case, like, you can just say anything you say, like, um.
I also can't, I can't believe that we don't have signed copies of the, um, of the, um, financial security for. So.
Because that gets no power.
Yeah.
I can stay cool, teacher. I'm sure she's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, not, really not in the ante, you know?
Yeah. The residents, that their big credit is, that, um, the HRA's give them. And that, you know, those streets are gonna be taking the lots, they're gonna be pumping streets. So, Joe, and we have, we're trying to, I guess, advocate to write that show, because of hours, yeah, have the HOA please pay for this no while. I know, from one of two of the projects, the township recently, you know, is from, it's, it's really, and now we're gonna see.
Hi, Harold.
Have you guys gone on your trips this year?
No, next weekend, bear season's next weekend.
Are you going up the mountains?
Friday, Friday to Tuesday.
Okay. What happened?
Right outside Royal Tuck.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be going on Friday, probably just Friday, come home Monday, I think.
We have never seen a bear or any evidence of a bear, but allegedly they're up there.
Yeah.
So, my husband has this big dream where he's gonna kill a bear. I'm like, what are you gonna do with it? When you kill it, you're not, like, we're not gonna get a taxidermy, put a house, so, yeah.
Yeah, good for him. Time away is good.
Yeah. It's nice because there's no cell phone service up there.
Oh, there you go.
So it's like, kids can't bother us, our exes can't bother us. It's just nice.
Well, I hope he, I hope he has some luck.
Again, you don't know what we're gonna do with the bear, if we get one, but.
The bear, they don't take up much of that much room.
Sure, cats would love their own.
I had a walk back up, I couldn't tell that. Can always tell when there's something shady up.
That was very.
That's fun, yeah. I admired that, that bit. It wasn't even gonna be five, but since you tried it, that will over, I understand.
Yeah, that was still a good one.
Yeah, and I mean, it was like, to, was trying the, um, possession and stuff, you know, it's.
Yeah.
It's not going.
And that's it's, it's a lot to keep track of. And that's why, you know, actually, we said, never release those plans that weren't paid. But, uh, that's our hammer.
Yeah, it's got, that's the same as when you're in, we're at the end, we've been on the year. It's like, just like the first five months, bang, 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 and then all of the year.
Yeah. I don't know why that.
Is this not normal, that the season's better like that, or?
Not for zoning here. For planning commissions, that's. But usually not for zoning here. I think our zoning here probably gets more than any other zoning here. To be honest, yeah. Do you go around?
They're my favorite.
Why don't you come to the clinic?
There's enough people that plan that. I would like to go to that because it keeps you in the loop and it keeps it fresh and that's upcoming, you know, um. But the same thing, I'm thinking, I want a bit like, I'm like, mucking, I'm thinking, you want to sit this way, I'm like.
Of all, of all the planning commissions that I work with, ours, our promises are very good. Um, there's a lot of people, a lot of experience, like, sometimes we get a developer group and, and you know, some planning commissions, they don't, they don't, they don't need, uh, developers, we got folks that work for the county, we got, you know, architects. Or expansion managers.
Yeah, maybe it across the board, that's right. They don't believe that it's something they wish. When these are free, they're like, right, coming up for Christmas now.
So.
So it might, that'd be good, but it eases off, I think you a chance to catch up on all the near ends, you know, things.
It doesn't matter, because you got all the holiday stuff, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But yes, that, it, it does help. We've had a lot of years of palates with all this, with certain, you know. And most of them we've turned down, like, we just can't.
Yeah, well.
Can't find people to work, you know? It's a shame. There's a lot of opportunity for growth, but you, you gotta have people that can do the job.
I thought that would have been a, a popular, like, career choice, putting a group listed.
It's a bad, bad. I think it's probably the generational change is, um, all, all the guys come out of college and girls, they want, they wanna work remotely. They don't wanna do night meetings. You know, the, the attorneys are saying the same thing, you can't get people to do this. We had a young engineer, um, him and his wife relocated from Calantown to, um, Sinking Spring. And we had a mutual acquaintance, um, so he came to work for us, he worked for us once. But he came out of my office one day and Scott, uh, we, we just, you know, we got the same thing idea. We were sitting there, he said, I gotta talk to you, and I said, and you go, I don't wanna work as hard as you do. Cause I'm going back to my old job.
That's scary.
Yeah. And what he did, what he meant by that is he didn't wanna do the night meeting.
So should you get some other kind of solution for that, like, you know, maybe like as a like, like, paralegal kind of equivalent or something, or? Maybe that's the AI is going anyway. And it's like, for one year, you don't know what state you're going to get.
I know. The, uh, developer will submit an AI-generated plan and we'll respond with an AI-generated review.
Yeah, and you know what, that's, that's not even common in a way, it's like, isn't it, that's like, it's, that's the way I say it. Would you say, you know, like, like, schools are having job fairs and things like that. But there was like, one of these masks, cause Josh, he's a senior, and that's very character, but he does well, he is. Um, he, he turned out, he's got a real talent, but he's really good at it. Just yesterday, like, schools and guy getting them, and they're like, I don't know, I can't get, I don't picture them training. Back up here, I don't think they job, just like that, this school, so. I'm just like, if there's kids who may, like, have lost something like that, like, curtain, get them as a hunter or something, try it out. You know, there's like.
Yeah. Um, we, we have a, a college intern now that we just, and he's been with us two years. Um, we made him an offer to stay on after he graduated, you know what I mean, like, and, and he's graduated. And spring, we're hoping. But that's when you have to try work, you agree?
I know some people, you know, they're, 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 they're certification, not for, they're going through a certification. Then you gotta give them like two years after that, then, and it's, it's just they lock them up, you know?
Yeah, yeah, um, and that's kind of what we did with this, with this kid, and he's, he lives in opposite too. Um, and, uh, for coding, we got coaches, we've been hiring people and training, like, you know. Some of them don't even occur from the trades, they just, yeah. What's, what's Josh gonna do at the ready mission?
He wants to, um, let it try to.
Okay. Does he always carry?
Well, he's actually willing to go back, yeah.
Okay.
Um, that's what happened on that, I wouldn't be there, and she just says, I don't know, but we're just going to, so, I'm like, it's just, I think. He says, I don't really do it, but, yeah, it's not like that, or do you want it? It's like, unfortunate.
I, I, I think four-year degrees are gonna become a thing in the past, the algorithm too.
So then, I mean, not like, he, he just went full time. Don't, and then started reworking.
Yeah.
Um, and I was like, she was in the whole of those jobs, you know, no, 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 she didn't, no, she didn't, no, that, that's. But that's a, but now he's, now he's thinking of, um, opening, and, because he's looking to help and job with him, like, there's a little bit of instruction. So he's thinking, here, go on, go on down that bit, start knocking on, and stay, cause he's a friend, like, he's got another hedgeback, and it's another kind of day. He doesn't like the long stuff to do, so he's been up. I remember that, um, that he's like, they're into it. But I don't, I feel like to that, but there's no, for me, it's, it's, I don't know. He stopped, but I think he's doing great, he's, I don't know, like, I don't know. Jen was like, I've been working for forty years everywhere. Not a different country, so. But it's a shame because it's like, like, part of it's like, I'm always, like, sharing, I take it, always like, have a case at home, like, he is. But it's like tough for them to get out and get out in the housing market and dress well.
Yeah.
And I started like this, I can say ten years, ten more time, right? Cause it's gonna have to be addressed, this house is crazy, it's very challenging.
I don't, I don't think that our Tyler has any idea of the rest of our household. We tried, like, educating them.
I was kind of, I don't have luck, yeah. I just, I can't, I, that's my weekends, or something. These guys, I still can't ask, I used to just keep them, they can't even. Yeah, they, they're lost, you know, and then, I guess it's all culture, because I was like, the only kids were certainly growing. But when you start, like, in like that, it's, you know?
This, this summer, my dad lives in Morgan Town, he's got a small lot, you know? Um, so Tyler's child, once he got his license was to go cut public box grass, you know? It was about a month and a half into it, my dad called me, he goes, he has to stop. I said, what do you mean? Because he's broken every piece of the equipment I have. He said, he's done so much damage, just take him back.
But that's probably a very intelligent thing, that's like, eye in your shirt, you're wearing it. You don't have to do it again.
I, I thought so, yeah.
Not getting them off crap, yeah. Yeah, they have it so easy, you know, they've got so much to offer on their way.
Yeah. Well, like you said, at, at some point, he's gonna be in shock.
You think, but he fall in footsteps.
No.
He won't.
Hearing that, I don't wanna do the job. He said the same thing, the kids don't know.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to see him go in the military, I, I think that would be good for, um, post.
That's a question, wasn't it, that was like. And it was, that was kind of sad, you know, because he never, you know, you start, you know, and, 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 and. And it turned out, he would buy me a couple of minutes ago, was, he told me, that you're not gonna go to the primary. He was just trying to turn on the trees, that's what he wanted. Helped him discover what he liked, and he liked this, and he was looking at Adam's books, and he had a little nail and a press, and so he started kind of doing that, I had a team, and I thought, isn't that, oh, that's awful, you know, and, and, and. But it's awful too, that they were like, preparing, they was like, a last resort. They shouldn't have been cutting that down, you know, either, because like, it takes a lot to do that.
Um, I, I, I just think, in the way that our Tyler worked, I, I think he would.
That does.
He, I, I think he excelled at that kind of structure.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't, he, he, he did start talking about it as an option, you know? I wanna work at the coast, because he loves water, he loves fishing, he loves, um, but he says that's not the military.
And that, Josh, it means, yeah, for, for two and a half years, that was, that was his mindset, just rings, yeah, yeah. The animal was suffering, of course. It was not the same, I couldn't get it here. I don't know. I'd be like, change my mind.
Mm-hmm.
You started your Christmas decorations, you had to call.
So.
Your house is so pretty with the lights through, yeah, I mean, never mind.
So we, um, we got some of them down. And, uh, we started a landscape project, which was a complete flop. Um, and incidentally, we never finished it, and, uh, the other project we wanted to do was paid, our, our living. So I found out this week, that this weekend we're painting the wall.
Ah, that's.
So we're half, we have the Christmas decorations ready to go, but none of them out, because we're painting them, so.
You better hope it's the weekend that rains.
I know, originally, I think it was supposed to be on Sunday, and I was going to go for Saturday, and I started in the Sunday, so I.
I always loved, and I was always like.
I don't, I don't mind.
It's like there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind that, um, we said so much else, you know?
Yeah.
I always feel that we're behind.
I like it if I can do it myself, someone's telling me, do this, it's like, here, you do it.
So, yeah, that's our, that's our plan.
What you're making, ah. Well, at least, at least I'm on stone, stone for a few years, so.
I, I hope so. The, the last time I painted it, after we were done, we didn't like the color. So we just left it up and never hung anything on the wall. I told Lindsay, I said, we gotta do something, this is like a college dorm.
Next time we cover the walls, we have everything, see, we'll see that.
It's, there's tapestry that's, yeah. Yeah. My daughter likes to move things in her room, literally like, once a month, and like, we're just gonna move this tapestry over. Sometimes they're like, you could reuse a wall.
Yeah.
Just like, no, it's too hot, it's too loud, I'm sorry, like, just keep putting those in the walls.
That's where I have to start, is I was told I'm gonna be maintaining from this wall, for this wall, right? I said, why do we have to do that? She said, well, I ordered a couch that only fits on this wall, so.
That's me, I contemplate that, like, or, it's the one straight wall, but then you step with your back to the garden, whereas now you can look out into the garden.
Yeah.
So they'd have to step on it back, and come up with it, and like, you know, look at the units again, like, twenty years, you go through the entertainment units. Well, they're all coming back, you know, and they do make a lot of sense. I'm thinking, should I go and, like, you know, because that, once you do it, and you build it in, you're kind of stuck with it then, you know? You can't just put a couch, you can't, and, and.
My daughter wants us to hang our TV, and I'm like, oh, that looks good, and then when you decide, I wanna move her bed, and then we're in June next week. We're not moving the TV. No, just, she has a, I don't know, anything, with drawers on her, that she was, on top of. It's really hard apparently, being sixteen.
We need a track in the same, and maybe just move it along, and drop it down.
Yeah.
He told him, like, you know, when you move out, you can do whatever you wanna do. But while you were here, she's like, well, that's nothing, you're right, so, okay, go do it at your dad's house, I'm watching the rice.
Go, I have two boys here, the opposite, I, I wanna move, I'm just remembering that, I like it the way it is.
They're, they're, like, the, the least amount that they have to do is, that's, I mean, that's.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
My son is gonna be twenty, so he can still rock in the same Eagles setting set, and we got him into this like five, five state, and like. I don't know, maybe you don't, you don't wanna use like, don't worry, if you're like, no, I love this one.
We, we literally had to wait till Tyler was out of town to change his bed, because his feet were hanging off, you know. He's like, oh, this, this is fine, this is just, I'm like, you're bigger than your bed.
My daughter had this twin size loft bed. And he said, like, she's taller, her dad's six and a half feet tall, so like, she's taller than I am, at sixteen. And he said, try going, like, don't, don't let your feet stick out the body of the bed.
No, I like this one a lot.
She went back to her dad's, for a week, and I said to my husband, like, there's a bed at Ikea, we're gonna go over there to stay. She went from her twin loft to a twin size loft, and now, like, she only sleeps on like this much, but the rest of it's always hu- the huge fish, the animals from Best Friend Shop that my dad bought her all the time. I'm like, but look, your feet are hanging off of here, that anymore, because now the cat can like, bother that way.
Nah, it's like, he had the crims too big, beds too big, he's on like, one XL. I'm like, I don't, I didn't got another one, I replaced it, same length, one XL, I'm like, oh my gosh. He says, I was a bigger bear, I must don't like that, got the same amount of space to sleep on it.
The other thing that, since he started driving, is the back of his truck has become like a, a second chest of drawers.
I agree.
We go to baseball game, and, you know, the pants were white, he'd pull out a pair of pants, and he's playing like three games, and Susan's like, where did those pants come from? I said, I don't know, like, you know, they're always going for hair, and she's just taking those off, and put them in the back of the truck, then they'd sit there, so the next thing you'd put them back on.
That was just, he came up, he was going on the next, last day of the week. I was like, yeah.
Yeah.
And so, two friends came over, he says, I'm driving, and I thought, okay, he came into the house, and I mean, I'd be like, that's sad, laundry, and the back of us getting her. I was like, you should be ashamed of yourself, he couldn't, I was like, you couldn't see him, that was like massive, I don't know. I said, you should be ashamed of doing anything like that.
Like, turn your hello cord back, but he bumped. My husband, my husband, we go, like, mine has been worked for one of the tantrics, so like, if I ride into it with him, through like, a tree or whatever. He gets, I'm like, it's really cold out, and I'm like, hold on a minute, it's like, reaching the back seat of the truck, and he's like, do you want the orange one, or the blue one, I'm like. Since we don't have any clothes in our closet, they're all in here, and like, are all of your coffee cups, you're all from the wrong back seat here, but then he gets in my chair, and he's like, it's so clean in here, I'm like, yeah. Like, the mess in the back seat is from George, or like, my domain, the friends' clean, see how that works?
Yeah.
I, uh, put the new insurance card in his truck last weekend, when I opened the door, there was a sign sitting there, it was one of those slippery one wet signs. I'm waiting to get a call from these guys, that, you know, your son stole the slippery one wet sign from Turkey Hill.
My daughter has a friend whose dad is an East Vincent cop, and one day, her friend brought her home, and she walks in with a stop sign, and was like. Where did you get that from? Um, we found it, and it was like, found it like on a pole, some, like, is somebody gonna die now, because you took a stop sign, and she's like. No, we found it, and he's like, okay, please get that back to me, I could let her take that to her house. So he's like, if she wanted a stop sign, like, we know people, we could watch them.
Yeah, I can.
Well, my dad used to work with Honda, so he's got one in his face, right? So.
I'm surprised, oh, my, my, maybe he doesn't go more often, I think I've seen him go once.
I know. I know.
Be taken once. All right, can we move the freaking repair sign from here, from camera? What? It's like impossible to see, why that sign, oh, yeah, and, and I think it's ve- especially if you're a little driver, and it's very difficult, yes, yeah.
He can see it, but he can't see in the drive. I try to teach my daughter how to drive, right, and like, you just gotta keep pulling up so you can see.
But that was not, that was not done a couple of months ago, was it?
Yeah, that's.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. I believe, I hear about it every time you get through there. And my parents come over, my dad, I'm like, I don't know, I don't know, I work for the downtown, I don't know, I just live here. I just won't pull out and knock it out in the morning.
That's a surprising difficulty.
That's right, because you wanna drive at four o'clock in the afternoon, five o'clock in the afternoon.
Pulling out from work at five, right? And I wait ten minutes to pull out, and like, I should have just driven the field to go home, I waited ten minutes to pull out, and then I pulled down the front camera, and I'm like. I just tried.
Yeah. You'd be faster walking, right? Part of your character, the traction bolt on the drive, don't you say?
Can you, that's, that's the reason for my dad, and you said something about.
If this gets edited out, I am gonna complain massively. Because one of us is down there, throwing his fit, and will, without a doubt, whatever happens between now and the end of the year, throw fits, have another lawsuit. Or do something stupid along those lines, and it will not benefit the community, because, oh yeah, that's right. The lawsuit, we didn't even know what the amount was until it came out on Facebook. So, I find that pretty interesting, so it costs our insurance money. So, happy day, I'll see how much more it can cause wrong, and cost us more money.
She likes, I literally like, I just try.
Okay, I can hear you in there. No, no, it's not the pitfall. I just got a car back. And then some morning, when I go to Lea, because I'm a charlatan, mine, so we. Some morning, it's like, what is on the front, where are all the cars going off? Why aren't you people walking right?
Yeah.
And the same with the water, time of the day, it's like, it's just, just as you, just as you can see a gag, they get out, there's another.
Yeah.
Last weekend, I was coming to work, and it was one of those bright sunshine mornings, and just going past like, the PlayStation, it was like a dump truck. And car just pulled right out, over, the overtaken coming this direction, so I was okay, I, I could see that, so I was gonna. Then Lily driving her car came out behind him, I was like, right at the garage, all I could listen was, I was like, I don't know, I thought. I'm like, I'm gonna make you this morning, I was such a goner, I was like, days when we ran, my mom, I was like.
Cause my daughter gets.
I could choke her, but I had.
And I'm driving on seven twenty-four, seven o'clock in the morning, that somewhere is horrible, like, you can't even see the cars, you know, and the dump trucks, just pull right out and try and get.
That's why I tell Josh, make sure you're driving with your head, especially on a sunny morning, you know?
When, when Josh comes this way, does he go see your order, I won't take see your order, but he goes, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for saying that, I'm saying that, that's what I do as well, I can receive it all very often.
My daughter wants to park it, I don't know, in these roads. Back in the sun, she wanted to go to Camp Prussia Mall, a couple of weeks before, and I said to her, I was like, oh, guess who's driving? I'll pay you the fee, you can drive. She's like, I never drove on the highway, I'm like. I don't know what to tell you, man, the first time Papa took you driving, it was the road behind the power plant, I don't know what to tell you. She did pop, it was a little, we need to go front on the right hand turn, and she pulls headlight, and then she like stops, and I'm like, people are beeping at you. Like, this isn't like a, we're laughing at you, no, we're laughing with you, they're beeping at you, like, please don't hit my car.
That's like, right, because I, I stuff like, twenty years driving on the weekends, I feel like, it was on, before I came.
On the wrong side of the road.
On the wrong side of the road, so when I came here, I had to get my driver's license, it was the turn and right, and the turn and left, and the only way I could do was, turn and right, keep it tight. So everybody said, I go to, turn and right, keep it tight, turn left, leave it on, and, and now, when I go back there, I believe in that drive over there, because I wouldn't, you know? But that was like, because normally I'd have been the other side of the road, like, you know?
It's been summer in England when I was nineteen, and, by the time I got used to driving on the left side of the road, man, I was like, oh, what are you doing to go home, I'm like, probably hit somebody.
Move the stairway, I'm just like, yeah.
There you go, you can buy a post office jeep.
Yeah, I never joined, I'm like, is that my, because a lot of cars over there are diesel, and, and you get like fifty, fifty-five minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, you said, you can sell post office. That's just, I'm gonna do enough difficulty, driving, instead of driving a car, drive with the ro- on the wrong side of the car, driving on the other side of the road.
We always live, because my husband, my husband's truck is twenty-three years old, and it's diesel, it's a big diesel, and it gets such better gas than I always think a jeep does. And I'm like, it's just ruined, like, it's ruined, I work a quarter mile from the house, why am I getting gas every week, like, it's crazy.
When I started my car, it was paying about, probably sixty, eighty dollars a week in gas, and other than driving Adams, I do about thirty dollars in gas a month. A month, that's a car payment right, right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and remember that time when gas was like four oh five per regular, that horrific, like, six months? I called my husband one day, and I was like, something's wrong with my debit card, and he's like, fine, like, the gas pump shut off. And he was like, it shuts off at a hundred dollars, and I was like, shut up, are you serious? He's like, yeah, you bring a jeep wherever, and I was like, oh my god. Cause the car I had before that had like a twelve gallon tank or something, this had a twenty-five gallon thing.
Because I never, I never had a day jam.
And he lost that finger down to it, did you know the gas light will flash if you let it go down far enough? And they keep it off, yeah.
I've never had that.
People, okay, so he made mistake of telling me that it has eight thousand tank of gas left when the light comes back on, and I'm like, okay, so I can drive back and forth, work like, a whole week like that, right? You know, that like flashes at a certain point.
That's it, you're welcome. And my return, it was like a hundred and sixty dollars to fall.
I don't know, each truck is like a hundred.
With diesel, so it was the time, the time the prices were like, you know, were before.
Even now, it's still, I think it's like a hundred and five. Well, it's almost like a thirty gallon type.
Almost like, almost like forty-two gallon tank, seven nights a gallon. It's like some of those big class A's have like, American sexy seven gallon tanks or something like that, no? And then with your lights on, if you haven't got enough gas in your tank, your generator won't run either, you know?
I'm amazed that there are no big campers, you see, going down there, it's amazing to me. I'm always amazed when, um, the guy at the corner, remember, Caitlin?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when he pulls his in, I'm like, gosh, it's like driving the tractor trailer home.
I always find it interesting how he parks it across the street when I gravitate above it.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm thinking, is he thinking of?
He's thinking of tree.
Insurance, yeah, there's, that's on the road.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
He'll clean up his insurance.
Yeah, I, yeah.
You know, we just like, our house, see, those are, and they're fantastic.
We have thirty-eight, they're house under the trees, it might get all the season, just because. And we, Murray, you're nervous the branch is gonna fall in the cover of the truck, we don't need the branch falling when we get here, and then.
We never had a problem until we put a new roof on, and then we got a branch right after, like, we had kids, our, our roof was shot, and we never had a branch.
We got a roof like two weeks ago, and the first day my husband did this, bring the pole solvent, marking cut, and then they touched the house off. Which is nice, because I'm gonna be at the, the wind's gonna die, so it turns like, I could just sleep through the night because that branch wasn't trapped, really.
We have shingles for about, probably like three years in America, and it's, and it's had a bad, remember, this is, this is on a stage now, you won't just have to get new shingles. For the roof, because then other ones, they're just like, they're probably all like that, you know, but.
I remember that, because the roof guy, and I thought, I'm working today, he's like, there's squirrels in your attic, and I was like, there's something in your attic, why? He's like, there's four squirrel holes on top of your roof, and I was like, oh, what kind of, I knew where the squirrels are gonna live this year, it's not now, but. Gosh, I told my husband, he was like, every time the cats get like, in this one corner, I'm like, they're staring at ceiling. And then I don't just like, you know, something ran across the, the ceiling, remember, and he's like, shut up, nothing ran across the ceiling. Apparently there were squirrels up there.
Oh, I'm afraid, I'd say anything, Harry, like that.
Oh, I don't care, I, I refuse to look in that eye.
I'll be in hotel room.
I just tell my husband, like, I'm not, forget that, it's like those steps that like fold down out of the ceiling, I'm not there when I, I'm not going up there, I don't wanna know what was in the attic.
Most like that, yeah.
The salt is not like heating the extensive luggage and stuff, I don't care what's sitting up there.
We had a snake in the basement this year.
Yeah, we had, they had, not, not, not bigger ones, like, but, you know, like a gag, one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanted to get them through the sun pump somewhere, or.
I don't know.
Know the groove for the water to get out, or something like that, it's.
My mom and dad get them in the basement, but they live in the market, so they're.
And then I was afraid that, really, I don't know, they're good there for them, is that there for?
We have to stop.
For the mace or something, I said, I was afraid of things, you know, the tank from there? That's the, I don't know, the work area that shared, there was, there was like, some paper towel on the floor, um.
You guys have a good night, I'm leaving.
Alright, there's somebody I see here. Back in love, and that paper towel's still lying, so I go over, like, they pick it up, you know, like, if they ever just, I just decided that there was a dead mouse, and I'm like, trap all the way to the bed. I'm like, I almost had a corner, so it wasn't even more than that, I can remember, like, she kept on going, and it was like, wasn't like, the heat holding up, it was like burgers, and you were gonna eat it. That just grosses me out, that kind of, I'm never picking up a piece of paper on the floor, if they were eating for my lady again, with the, the mice, because they come from the garage, you know, that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's why I would like that office, and I wouldn't go there, because it's high, it's just.
Yeah. Yeah, well, the doors are always open in the back, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and like, I brought the straps that are across my office doors, and now they're up there to get them closed a little, as, as they keep the water out of your garage, but I'm putting them up in front of my door. So they can't squivel through, but, yeah.
Unless she's one of the people.
Oh, gosh, no, I just, I just can't.
Yeah, we. We, I don't, like, those things at all.
And I said, my husband, our house, we're doing, so it's a bad, you know, we're on, so we're straight up, we're heads up our basement. That's, I mean, I'm a freaking cat, of course. Oh, really?
I didn't say it was the name of the book, and I was like, I was like, I'm doing that somewhere.
Oh, gosh.
And it went right back over there, and he was like, oh, like, calling my husband, like, I don't know what you call rats, like, please, phone call, bring some help.
You think we all the cats, wouldn't you, they'll take care of them?
I don't know what those cats actually do, other than some bathing. And like, squirreling, whatever, yeah. There are nights we're sitting, and like, our front door and stuff is on the second, it's on that second floor deck, and like, sitting on the couch, I'm like. There's a cat out there, and then it just sits up there, and like, you can tell it's male cats, because they're like, that, it's a male cat, a cat, you can feel them, they're little, they're like, they're so loud, and our cats are looking, they're like, that, what's going on? I don't know, but we don't play with it, it's like, yeah.
Like, that must be awful, having they left next to someone who, you know, so she doesn't, we have to figure out cat colonies, and stuff, the way, of course, she's.
I don't know if she's still feeding them, but it seems like they're just being aggressive to colonize those cats.
No, we're not.
It's nice our engineer has remained.
Is there something I need to share?
Is there something we need to?
It feels like air conditioning in here.
I don't want him to speak to me, that's something, so.
Down there, it's like, it is.
I'm heading back to the session at nine, ten, I'll take this session, we're talking about personnel legal issues. Ready?
Make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
No, we have a motion to.
Is there a second? We have a second.
Yeah, I'd like to, Christopher, but not to adjourn.
Any more than motions? Is there deliberation on a motion to adjourn? Well, he made a motion to adjourn.
But none of us are agreeing.
There, there needs to be a second, does it, do they not?
Correct.
All right, so, do I have a second to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion.
Motion, fit, motion, motion.
Looks like my motion failed.
Yes, I would say it did. Yes, I would say it did.
All right, now what else we have here then?
You ready? I can make my motion now?
Depends on who you think, I have a motion to.
That's cool. I make a motion to hire Derek Rhodes as our manager at seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Does that have to be ordered?
Offer.
Okay, we'll make it offer, I'm sorry.
Offer of employment to Derek, Derek Rhodes.
So, so, so you went and used a fellow's name. Go ahead, I'm waiting for a second.
Wait, are you still going through the motion?
Yes, mo- motion to. Offer, so they can offer.
Make an offer. Make an offer of employment. I have an offer at seventy-eight thousand.
Okay, that is a motion. You have a second? Have a second?
That fails for lack of a second, does it not, Mr. Chairman, and I again make a motion to adjourn. We can discuss this Tuesday.
Well, give, give it a sec, give it a sec.
We can discuss this Tuesday again.
Yeah, if there's no second, we're done, yeah. Can you second it?
I'll second it. Okay, let's have a discussion on the motion. No, it's time to have a discussion on the motion. So now that you use Mr. Rhodes's name, what's gonna be his job description?
I said manager, I don't think I stuttered.
So we're gonna make an offer?
That's right, you heard it.
For, for a manager?
Seventy-eight thousand dollars.
How much?
Seventy-eight thousand. You're hearing anything?
Uh, I don't, but I thought that's what you said the first time, but the second time it did not sound like.
It was the same, and by the way, there's been complaints about the, mic's not picking up, so just so you hear that one.
All right, so we have a, behind the eye discussion.
Are you gonna set other terms of his employment and conditions?
We just said make an offer.
And what are we gonna do about the code issue? So I believe that there should be two hires.
Didn't, didn't we just?
There's a discussion on the motion, and I believe there should be two hires, and this board is going the entire wrong direction.
I know, cause it's not your direction.
That's not a reflection of Mr. Rhodes, but we need to discuss it further, there's no need to rush. We have a quite capable Harold Steve in there, straightening out the mess.
Uh huh.
So I, I would request that we, we withdraw that motion.
I'm not withdrawing.
End of second.
Do you, you wanna amend your motion to specify additional terms, including but not limited to the start, the start date and the other benefits?
Yes.
St- standard benefits for an officer employee?
Yes.
And a start date of when?
TBD.
Yeah, TBD, because we have to.
Agreeable, agreeable with what the party is?
Yes, by the party.
So that, that's the motion, is there, is there a second on that?
There was.
Well, let's have a discussion on the amended motion at second. We're in the same situation, fellows, that we're going the wrong direction. And we need two hunters, not one, to straighten out the mess. We haven't done enough research, there are other potential candidates, there is no need to rush.
The only person dragging their feet is you, and this has been months. So.
Any other comment, any other discussion? All right, we have a motion to second, so we're all calling Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Let you go, um.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Midler?
No.
I'll go, yes.
Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
At nine fourteen, nine fourteen, we have a second.
Second.
Let's have a discussion on the motion.
On Taylor, on Taylor? That's a good default.
So I don't wanna sign.
Signature?
As treasurer, is there a?
A payphone, in, in business for Tuesday, we're putting about receiving. Microphones. I know that, but it doesn't work, and people complain. And why can't I? I got it. It's a hundred and fifty bucks for me here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just bring it back. Oh, yeah, 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 yep, yep. Our, the Geiger town closed off.
That's good, Scott, too.
We're gonna, I think I said a lot of our vendors are calling, did you change your address? And it's written perfectly and it's said undelivered, we return this under. Scott, give, give yours on these right here.
And then, and then tips on those.
Yeah, I mean, that was a question. No, I love, I love the way it was.
I'll get him back to the president.
Is that all you needed from that one? Yeah, I was gonna say, really, you don't want any of them. Well, guess what? He's not gonna get his money back till he gets his act together right there. Yeah, I think that's simple.
It's Carter, this is your Carter.
What the one next? Well, that one, the other one, just that, just that.
I don't think he's saying this as well.
Well, if I was a blonde and this, I even let, you know, I would happily sign for you, ma'am. Harold, why don't you walk into the microphone so that we know if the microphone is sitting or some, because that was the thing I heard when I went out. We can't hear in like, uh, we can't hear anybody half the time. I don't know.
I'm sure it's not me, but I'm like, that's true.
No. Right, but that's why I'm saying, I don't know if, while it's going on, somebody wants to get one hand.
Sometimes you can't hear you down with that.
Maybe it should be in the mail.
It is, there's, I just.
So be careful on my handicap.
No, put it here, at least then it's, you get most of everybody.
How nice, my gentleman. I, uh, talked to the auditor from the state, from the relief association this morning, about that paper that we've signed for eighteen years straight, she is checking, it's not her baby, but she's branching to make sure that shouldn't have been, should or shouldn't have been done.
Oh, she don't know?
She is just the auditor, but she's been real awesome with things, so she's been going to her people to verify. Well, no, the auditor wouldn't, she wouldn't see that. All she's looking for is timely deposit. Like, check was sent here on October fifteenth, it wasn't Marshall deposit, plus, then you make, the township made interest by sitting on fifty-six thousand dollars. They want timely deposit, that's why I mentioned that. And that's why I was like, maybe we should just reissue and deposit, but I wanna tell you, eighteen years straight, I had to walk in here, sign a piece of paper that they provided, that the township also signs with the check number and the amount from the parts. Maybe they changed something. Cause it's never mailed before, it was always pickup and personally you had to sign it. I just wanna make sure that. And I'm always gonna take us, here's the form, we sign four, but. I'd rather not. Put that with a big, big.
I know, I really gotta stop saying that, cause somebody's gonna leave it. Not true.
Good night, Paul.
Good night, Paul. I, I, to me, it may, make no sense to me.
Makes, doesn't make, don't make any sense, doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
I wanna understand the zoning around the, around the parcel. An overlay based upon, utility of the parents, does not seem legit, uh, to me, but I could, look at the case, look at the case law.
But that's, that's what they are saying. Solar and, and that's.